Thanks for tuning in. If you're watching on YouTube, be sure to hit the subscribe button to stay up to date on all our latest video content. If you're watching on local gov TV, be sure to visit their website to see all of the content made for you by your local governments. Alamance County is pleased to present the Alamance County Commissioners' Meeting.
Meeting of Alamance County Board of Commissioners on August 6, 2018. I am Chair, Amy Scott Gailey, and all the other Commissioners are here except for Commissioner Sutton, who unfortunately cannot be with us today. Before we get started, I want, we have a, I don't know if it's going to be recorded on the video, but we have a car alarm going off outside, which reminds me that the city of Graham is ticketing now for parking. So if anybody here has parked in a two-hour spot, you might want to be aware of the time. We would not want you to get an unwelcome notice from the city of Graham on your way out. And also, I just want to mention that today, I've been struggling with a throat cold for the last week, week and a half, and right now, my voice is strong, but if that, if it doesn't hold out, I may be asking Mr. Lashley to take over the gavel as his vice-chair. So this morning, Commissioner Byrd has our invocation and will lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Thank you, Madam Chair. In recognition of the wide diversity of faiths that we have in our community, I would like to offer a moment of silence so that each of us can pray in our own way, or not at all. And as we do, I'd like to ask that we remember these things. First, why we are here, so that this body can collectively lead and govern our county government in a manner that is best for our community. Let's remember the victims and survivors of human trafficking, domestic violence, sexual assault, elder abuse, and adverse childhood experiences. Let's remember that those that are suffering from other forms of oppression, enslavement, abuse, crime, systemic racism, and social injustices, including those that have committed crimes, who have paid their debt to society, but who earnestly want to change their ways and become productive citizens, but need jobs and stable housing. Let's remember those that are homeless and hungry, especially our children, those that are suffering from mental and physical illnesses and the challenges of aging. And lastly, let's remember our first responders, our law enforcement officers, and our uniformed armed services personnel, who put themselves in harm's way every day to protect us. With these things in mind, let's have a moment of silence. Would you please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, this morning, we have a few public speakers who have signed up. I'm not going to go over our public comment policy like I've done in the past. Actually, yes, I am, because we have more speakers that have signed up than I'd realized. For public speakers, when we have an item on the agenda and people come to speak about it, the rules of the Board of Commissioners allows three people who are in favor of an agenda item and three people who are opposed to an agenda item. Each person gets to speak for three minutes. I will enforce the time limit today and ask you to sit down at the end of your three minutes. That's not personal from my point of view, and it's no reflection on anybody's opinion of what you're saying. It's just like when the shot clock goes off in basketball, the shot clock goes off and the ref gives the ball to the other team. And that's just the rule. So we're going to stick with that rule, and we have no more than 30 minutes total of public comment, because that's what the rules allow. So with that being said, the first speaker we have today is Perry Slate.
Good morning. My name is Perry Slate, and I, my family and I own a farm off of Deep Creek Church Road in northeast Alamance County. The proposed route of the Mountain Valley Pipeline Extension diagonally crosses our entire farm from corner to corner. We so feel targeted by this company due to the open fields that we have. We are a hay farm. I'm pleading with you this morning to oppose the Mountain Valley Pipeline, and I would like to highlight a few of my reasons. There are many. First of all, our farm is family land. I'm the eighth generation to live on our farm. It's been in my family since the 1700s. We have a strong respect and love for our land. We've had many financial opportunities, golf courses, housing developments, wedding venues, even some might want to put an airport one time out there, and our answer always has been and always will be no. It's not only the home to my generation, but also the future home of my children and grandchildren and those of my brother. It is our responsibility to protect our land. It is priceless to my family. Thus, you can imagine how sickening we feel when we think that Mountain Valley Pipeline could steal our land from us for just mere pennies and leave what's left with little or no value. Our farm is a working hay farm. Can't tell you the economic need and use of that farm as we prepare to retire and look at our future. That's not only true of us, but of our neighboring farms. Another consideration is the lack of validation of need. I've attended a meeting in Raleigh this summer with the Department of Justice and asked for them to do a study to prove to us that there is a need for this pipeline, because at this point, all information we have is that there is sufficient gas for present and future needs. Finally, pipelines are so very dangerous. The proposed route goes between my house and that of my sister-in-law. Our community, including our farm, does not need the heightened risk of explosions, fire, and extreme pressure that accompany a frack gas pipeline. At the MVP Open House, which I attended with some of you, the company participants could not or would not tell us how large a range would extend in case of a catastrophe. I also need to note here that our farm, named Border Lake Farm, borders the city lake, which is a source of drinking water. Please take a stand for the landowners of Alamance County and oppose the Mountain Valley Pipeline. I keep hearing the same story over and over, that there is a textile mill that has to lay off people in the winter because they don't have sufficient gas. I heard your county attorney defend them at an early Commissioners' Meeting. I have spoken with the CEO of that company. He told me the exact same story, almost word for word. He also told me that it was coming, I might as well give up, and that I should make them pay me well for my land. Again, it's priceless. Thank you. Please support us.
Thank you, Ms. Slate. Kelly Bollinger.
My name is Kelly Rudd Bollinger. I live and own property on Sandy Cross Road. I'm here to ask the Board of Commissioners to stand with the people and adopt a resolution against the MVP Southgate Pipeline. We understand that Alamance County has no official decision-making ability to allow or not allow this pipeline, but our county does have a voice. You have the ability to stand with us and say this is not something that is good or necessary for Alamance County. A resolution against this pipeline would say that Alamance County cares about the residents and the environment. A resolution will send a message to the state of North Carolina and the MVP Company and their affiliates that protecting the private property rights of Alamance County citizens and protecting our land and water is important. It is a statement that says it is wrong to take private property, eventually through eminent domain, for private gain. The representative for MVP will speak about a promise of economic advantage, the necessity of the pipeline, and the need for diversification of natural gas supply. All of these statements can be debunked with a simple Google search. What he won't tell you is about the numerous environmental violations MVP has committed and are having to address in our neighboring state of Virginia, as well as West Virginia. He won't tell you about the numerous ongoing protests in those states where people have been fighting against them taking their land. He won't tell you how it feels for someone to take his property, something we have worked hard to own and keep, because he doesn't know how that feels. What he and others with MVP do know, but won't mention, is how their bank accounts are growing, and that is what is driving this pipeline. We are working at all levels of government to stop the continuance of this type of business where they do as they please and ask forgiveness later, not respecting landowners, not following environmental construction and safety guidelines placed on and agreed to by the companies. Other counties in North Carolina have said no to natural gas pipelines through resolutions. Alamance County can say upfront that what you have to offer isn't good enough and is a violation of private property rights and bad for our environment. The natural gas pipeline is constructed by a private company providing a finite resource for energy on the backs of all of us, and the largest burden falls on property owners. We pay twice, once through the taking of our property, and again, when we all pay for the construction of this supposed cheap energy source. The old saying, "If it sounds too good to be true, it usually is," should come to mind when MVP starts talking. You will be talking today about the strategic plan for Alamance County. Adopting a resolution against MVP Southgate Pipeline will support four of the five pillars in the strategic plan. Saying no to this pipeline will help protect and preserve agriculture interests, including forestry, support the Public Health and Safety Initiative, support smart growth and development, and illustrate government accountability to its constituents. This is a bipartisan issue. Private property rights and the environment are what is at stake. Work together to say no to this pipeline. Thank you for your time and attention to our request.
Ladies and gentlemen, we, part of the rules for public comment period is that we don't applaud when people are finished speaking. We don't boo either. Do either way. So can we just keep that in mind, please? That'd be great. Lacy Warren.
My name is Lacy Warren. I live on Sandy Cross Road in Burlington. I'm a lifelong resident of the area, and I've been in real estate here for over 11 years. I'm here today to speak in regards to the proposed MVP Southgate Pipeline. Natural gas pipelines not just raise concern about the environment and private property rights, they also affect property owners' wallets. From a real estate standpoint, pipelines can reduce property values anywhere from 10% to 40% by making them less attractive to potential buyers. Buyers cringe when they read on a plat, "Gas Pipeline" or "Gas Easement." Obviously, there are certain restrictions that are placed on properties because of easements and because of right-of-ways in general. You can't build a permanent building, you can't plant trees over it, so that leaves the property with less usable area as a whole. The negative stigmas against pipelines on properties are particularly expressed by those with small children. They not only have a fear of health hazards, but they have a fear of potential disasters from explosions. Some may say that buyers are a little bit irrational about this topic, but it's a fact that that's how people think. A similar stigma that some of you may be familiar with in our area are homes that are built close to overhead high-voltage power lines. I'm sure some of you have driven past those homes before, looked at them, and thought to yourself, "I could never live there." That's the same stigma that I'm referring to here. Cases where this pipeline could bisect land that's slated for development will prevent landowners from developing building lots for homes to be built. In some cases, this would cause them to lose access to parts of the land altogether. For each building lot lost, there comes a tax loss, revenue loss, to our county. Some quick math for you. $150,000 home equals approximately $900 per year in taxes to the county. Just by losing 20 lots, that's around $20,000 lost in tax income each year to our county. Multiple properties in this area that is proposed as being affected by the pipeline are currently in agricultural and forestry use. When bisected, some of these properties could lose their tax status, meaning that these families will be hit with the cost of paying in three years deferred taxes. That's a cost that some small farming families cannot afford. The reduction in property values will ultimately impact all county residents by decreasing property tax revenue obtained by our local government. Even at a 5% decrease in property values, that could cost our county tens of thousands of dollars every year. If you have visited any of our public schools, you know that this is not a loss that our county, our children, or educators can stand to lose. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Thank you, Ms. Warren. Next is Aubrey Hilliard.
I'm Aubrey Hilliard with Texan Natural Gas and Not the Enemy. I've spent a major part of my time now in areas of renewable energy, and that's kind of focused on landfill gas and methane from hog farms to electricity. So I understand the position. Today, I just got on my cellphone, noticed that we're under gas restrictive usage, so Alamance Hospital, for example, or Copeland Industries, who asked me to speak for them, are under restricted gas usage today. It's not that hot. So my point is that we were all sold a bill of goods years ago, and that bill of goods came from Progress Energy saying, "We're going to take coal-fired plants that we know are nasty, and we want to get rid of them, and for the greater good of everyone, we're going to do it with coal-fired plants, and we're going to put in natural gas plants." When they had the coal plants, you remember, you had the big coal pile, and you had a constant string of cars on a railroad to supply it. When we built the gas-fired plants, we didn't build any pipeline infrastructure to meet their needs. So to put it in perspective, on the coldest day of the year, we used about 1.2 billion cubic feet of gas per day to meet our needs. And on the coldest day of the year, then we were curtailing industry and hospital and all this, but that was our maximum usage. Once the gas-fired plants were built, we're using about a billion cubic feet of gas a day, every day, and we had no infrastructure gain. Now, I think all of us were in favor of putting cleaner gas in the place of coal. Where we were sold a bill of goods is that Progress Energy didn't tell us at the time we needed the rail lines to get it here. The gas pipeline should have been part of that at the time, and then we all could have said, "We want it or we don't want it." So I'd like to kind of change the conversation today or your thoughts. We've got gas-fired power plants, and we like them better than coal. Do we want to operate them if it requires us to put new gas pipelines here, which it would if we want to operate them on a normal basis? I actually think our argument comes back to going to the Utilities Commission and going to the regulated monopolies and saying, "You didn't give us all the facts at the time." And what we should do is either, if we're for gas-fired power plants, we're for a pipeline, which is for the greater good of all. If we're not for that pipeline to serve it, we ought to talk seriously about rolling blackouts, because on the hottest days and the coldest days, the Copeland Industries, the hospitals, are burning dirty fuels when they normally would be on natural gas. So we're now polluting the environment, we're making things worse than when they could have access to natural gas all the time. So I really think our argument today is, how do we want to run our power system? Because we've got a third-world gas system, because of the fact that we didn't build the pipelines at the time we built the power plants. Anyway, that's my thought. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Hilliard. Bill McCauley.
Good morning, Madam Chair. Commissioners, thank you for allowing me to speak today. My name is Bill McCauley, and I'm the Vice President of Economic Development and Government Relations for PSNC Energy. That's a public service company in North Carolina. We're one of the same. We're a natural gas local distribution company, and we're regulated by the North Carolina Utilities Commission. We have more than 550,000 customers in 28 counties. We serve some of the fastest-growing areas in the state and even the nation. We've served central, eastern Alamance since the '50s, and we're the natural gas company for the Triangle and the surrounding counties. We purchase gas from suppliers, we contract for transportation services to bring the gas to our system, and then we distribute the gas to our customers through our local gas system. In the last decade, we've added over 100,000 customers. Think about that. We've got 550, and 100 of them have come over the last decade. That's almost a 25% increase in just 10 years. North Carolina continues to grow, and that growth is why we're here today discussing MVP Southgate. Without that growth, we wouldn't need this. When natural gas is available, or can be made available through land extensions, it is the overwhelming choice. Homes and businesses alike choose natural gas for its low cost, efficiency, and reliability. And because growth means a higher demand for natural gas, we have to meet that demand. On the coldest days, our customers expect and deserve to get good service. But the company also has to meet that demand at the best cost. We don't make any profit on the gas supply or transportation service. Those costs are simply passed through to our customers. However, the Utilities Commission is always looking over our shoulder to ensure that we acquire these services at the best cost, and after looking at all of our alternative options, MVP Southgate was the best cost, and is. Natural gas helps fuel the growth, economic development, and overall prosperity for our region. Companies relocating to the area want natural gas for their businesses. Home builders want natural gas because the market demands it. MVP Southgate will help PSNC meet that higher demand for years to come at the best cost. Thank you very much.
Thank you. All right, I'm moving to the sign-in sheet for people who, those, there's five previous speakers signed up online. Now I'm going to move to the sign-in sheet. We've had three people in opposition to the pipeline speak already. We've had two in support, so by our rules, we can have one more speak in support, or if any of these people want to talk about something else, they have that opportunity available to them. So I'll call your name, and just if you are going to speak in opposition to the pipeline, if you just say pass, or "I'm good," or something like that, that'd be great. All right, Mallard Hall.
Pass.
Lisa Hall. Amy Roach.
There may be an overflow.
Right. We'll come back to Ms. Roach if she can let us know. Henry Hare, or Brenda Hare. There may be an overflow. And Chris Barber. So we have, we have somebody stepped in overflow. Check with those people.
They're all four in there.
They all passed? Okay, great. Thank you for your cooperation with that. So that ends the public comment period. Commissioners' responses.
Save them till we talk about Mountain Valley Pipeline.
I'll wait till after the presentations, but I would like to thank everybody for coming and speaking.
Mr. Lashley.
Yeah, I'll wait after, too.
All righty. Next on our agenda is approval of the agenda. Well, before we move to approve the agenda, I have something to amend it. We wanted to delete, on the agenda that was published, no, on the agenda, yeah, 7.2, we had a request to set a public hearing for economic incentives. We're told that we need to delete that item from our agenda, so if I could have a motion to amend the proposed agenda, deleting item 7.2.
Second.
We have a motion in a second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? So then, if I could have a motion to approve the agenda as amended.
Second.
We have a motion in a second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Next, we have the consent agenda. Just a few items on that.
Make a motion to approve this, Lieutenant.
Second.
We have a motion in a second to approve the consent agenda. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Next on our agenda is the 2018 NCACC 4H Youth Voice Delegate. Mr. Brooks, I think he would come forward.
My name is Macau Brooks, and I'm the Alamance County County Council President, and this year, I've been selected to go to the NCACC meeting. And I've been involved with 4H ever since I was born. My grandmother's in 4H, my mom's in 4H, my aunt's in 4H, my cousin's in 4H, so I couldn't wait to follow their footsteps and join 4H officially when I reached the 4H age of five. But when I was four years old, my cousin got her first market lamb to show, and I was so jealous that my mom got me a lamb that I could not technically show in the ring, but I trained that lamb, and I fed that lamb, and I did everything for that lamb. And from that first market lamb project, my love for animals has grown, and so has my love for 4H. Through 4H, I've been able to show lambs, goats, turkeys, beef cattle, hogs, and dairy cattle. And out of showing all these dairy cattle, my passion has been in the dairy industry. And the dairy industry has been on the decline, but by showing and doing other leadership activities with the dairy industry and 4H, we have been able to get a younger generation of agriculturalists interested in the dairy industry. Through showing dairy cows, I've been able to travel all across the state into Virginia and South Carolina to show up various state fairs, and a couple of years ago, I had the chance to travel to Louisville, Kentucky to show dairy cattle at the North American International Livestock Exposition. Now, whether I win or lose these shows, I always come back with more knowledge than I went. I learned different ways to feed my animals, different ways to clip them, how to wash them, how to make them look their best in the showroom. And that is an important part, because it allows me to bring my knowledge back to the community and bring leadership and other facts to other young agriculturalists in the dairy industry. When I started showing, it was only me and another older girl that were showing the dairy cows in our little group, but over the years, we've picked up several little boys and girls that all looks up to us because we are their mentors. This 4H leadership and dairy leadership go hand in hand, because they all allow younger agriculturalists or younger generations of leaders to evolve into what they hope to be and help and make a positive impact in their community. So I'd like to thank you all for sending me to this conference, and I thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you so much for coming today. It was great to hear from you. Okay, now we have Mr. Bain is here to do a Workforce Development Annual Report.
May I come up, give you all the...
Of course, come on.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good morning.
Madam Chair, you'll have to bear with me. I've got a throat cold as well.
Well, if you need some lozenges, I'd be happy to.
Thank you. I wanted to kind of do a brief overview. I know the room is packed. I want to try to do a brief overview of our annual report, and I've brought Lisa Arnett, our NC Works Career Center Manager in Burlington, so she can talk about the things that are going on directly here in the NC Works Career Center. I want to kind of give you an overview of all of the counties that we serve, and then I'm going to focus on Alamance County. In our report, you can see an outline of the NC Works Online System in the first page, our NC Works Next Gen System, which is specific for youth 16 to 21, 24 years of age. Have a table of contents and a listing of our NC Works Career Centers in the counties that we serve with our addresses and phone numbers. There's a brief message from our Board Chair, Ricardo Ramero. Just want to kind of highlight one thing that he said toward the bottom of it. We have served 1,464 employers and have posted a total of 12,705 jobs and assisted 7,332 job seekers in career needs assessments, career readiness training, job search, job referrals, resume cover letter, interview preparation, basic computer skills at no charge. We also operate the WIOA Workforce Innovation Opportunity Act programs, which are training programs, scholarships programs, specific for training for individuals 16 all the way up to 100 years of age if they want to come in. We're glad to help them. Our next page here is our board members from the counties that we serve. And then there's overview from me, talking about our regional labor market. Our workforce in our region in our five counties is 275,920 individuals, with 264,800 of those working. One thing I want to talk about, and I'll hit a little bit later on with the chart, but last year, we provided staff assisted services, which is job search, resume preparation, career assessment, training services, and job referrals to 2,821 adults and dislocated workers in our five-county region, which resulted in 1,898 of these individuals, which is 68% of these individuals procuring employment. The fourth quarter net earnings of these 1,898 individuals was $31,152,237, which represents over a 12... In our W I O A youth program, we provided training services to a hundred and sixty-one youth, which are predominantly out-of-school youth with barriers to employment, age sixteen to twenty-four. Uh, we also served fourteen hundred and sixty-four businesses through job postings, job referrals, job fairs, on-the-job training, paid work experience, and something else this report doesn't go into, we're now doing incumbent worker training with employers, so if they have a workforce that they want to upskill, we have funds available to upskill those individuals as well for employers. Here's our staff directory. Next page, which would be page eight, is our N C Works Certified Career Pathways. Last year, the N C Works Commission mandated that every local area in the state of North Carolina have at least two certified career pathways. Regional Partnership has the most in the state, we have five certified career pathways. We have two in healthcare, one is specific to healthcare and nursing, and then one is specific to healthcare and allied health. We have advanced manufacturing, aviation, transportation, and logistics. And I know in this report, it says they're apply for, but they were all approved, and the last one was in November. Here's our, uh, two thousand seventeen, we owe a contractor list by county and by program. Here's the wage report on page ten and eleven, and I was speaking of specifically, uh, with return on investment for individuals we served, and I want to talk about Alamance County and the individuals we served here. Last year, we provided staff assisted services to a total of one thousand and forty-eight adults and dislocated workers. Out of this total, seven hundred and thirty-seven of these individuals, which is seventy percent of these individuals procured employment and recorded a net fourth quarter earnings of ten million, nine hundred and fifty thousand, one hundred and two dollars. And that's, that's money coming right back into this community taxpayers and, and going through, um, businesses buying goods, and so that money's right here in this community. Page twelve and thirteen is our budget. Last year, Alamance County's total we owe a budget was six hundred and twenty-two thousand, four hundred and forty-five dollars going out to the contractors. It gives pictures of all of our total budgets. Uh, the number of on-the-job trainings that we did last year was sixteen, uh, we, and it breaks it down by, uh, company, the ones that we did on-the-job trainings with. Next page, which is fourteen and fifteen, is the layout of, uh, demographics and employment statistics for Alamance County. Uh, you can see the education requirements on advertised jobs, you can see the labor force, the number of employed, unemployment rate, um, the average employment wage statistics for Alamance County as compared to the state. You can see the top employers by job openings. Um, you can see the top ten occupations by O-NET code on page fifteen. On page sixteen and seventeen, it outlines some individual success stories, but with the participants that we served in our programs. Um, there's a, uh, outline of new and expanding companies over on the left-hand page, and several of those companies we've worked with, uh, with on-the-job trainings and with, uh, now incumbent worker training. Uh, there's a, uh, article about the N C Works Career Center and an individual, what a difference it made in her life, and she goes in sort of a testimonial to work in with Lisa Arnett and her staff there. Also included a labor market overview for your review. And I, I won't really go into all the details, I don't want to steal any of Lisa's thunder about what's going on here in Burlington.
Sure. Good morning. I've met a lot of you, I've got all these kind of meetings, and I, y'all do too. It's a pleasure to be here this morning, it's a pleasure to talk about the N C Works Career Center as a representative of my staff. Not only is it representative of the staff that actually works directly for me, but the N C Works system, I don't know how well you're familiar with it, but it is actually a co- collaboration of partnerships. Uh, as, as county officials, you know, the number of the funds necessarily aren't going up, they're going down when it comes to service delivery. So, uh, we are maximizing those dollars by partnering with air, other entities in the area to make sure that we don't duplicate services, but that those services are available. Partners that stay at our center on a regular basis are, uh, what we call Title V, which is senior citizens, which in Alamance County is, uh, Black Ageed runs that, they come in our center, vocational real validation comes in our center. We have three representatives from Alamance Community College in our sys-, uh, our center that help do career counseling and provide our, uh, training in our employability class, and that class teaches, um, how to, how to look for work. You know, I tell everybody that comes in our center, you know, if you, most everybody's been in our center, they get unemployed well, to get unemployment, you have to have worked. You know, you just can't, there has to be wages in the system. So, you know, I tell everybody, when you're at home, and, you know, you've been working for years and years, and all of a sudden, you're at home, and you're like, you know, when you're at home, I, I do this for a living. At night, I'll sit here and go, what are the latest resume stuff? You know? What are the key words that should be on my resume? You just don't do that until you need it, or you want to change jobs, or whatever. So we, A, we partner with A C C to make sure that people get up to speed real quickly, uh, so they can get those jobs before, am I sure?
Mike's just calling.
So that we can get them back to work. Um, because unemployment rate in Alamance County and North Carolina is so low, it's three-point-five percent here in Alamance County, uh, it has caused the duration by the state law of unemployment insurance benefits to be cut down to twelve weeks as max. So that's not much time for you to get back to work. So we, we partner with, like I said, all those people, we partner with, um, a lot of other agencies, Department of Social Services, um, the, some nonprofits in the area. Uh, we have a large, uh, what we call a partnership meeting quarterly, so that everybody knows what everybody's doing, again, so that we can coordinate those services and, um, make those services available. We also provide, I think, uh, one big secret is we provide a ton of services to the employers in the area. Not only helping them with job orders, but we provide onsite recruiting activities. We normally have anywhere from two to six employers in our center every week. Uh, they're recruiting for employees, and it's also a good opportunity for our customers, even if they don't necessarily get it with that one particular employer who's there today, they can, you know, sharpen up those interview skills. So, uh, we do provide that, we've provided space for employers who are new to the area, they haven't gotten their building built yet, so they come to our center and use our space. Uh, we did that with P R A Group this year, last year-
Where are y'all located?
We're located at twenty-six forty Columbine Lane, uh, which is, uh, right in there, I tell, here's how we tell everybody, you know, I'm an old country girl, you know where the K and W is?
Yeah, right up, right up the hill, right?
You're right, we're right behind the Cut and Board Restaurant, we're the only thing on that road. The local area has partnered with us, we're very fortunate with our local area, they partnered with us and the state of North Carolina, I'm a state employee, and we have a fine facility, uh, fairly new, less than ten years old. We have a computer, we not only have computers and a fax machine for the employer, uh, employee, public to use, but we also have a training lab, again, that where we can hold classes based on, uh, whatever the needs are. We partner with Alamance Community College on that, so if they need space, I tell them, this is your run. You do what, you train as you will and what we need. So, we're very, very fortunate to have all that, and I, we appreciate the support of the county, we appreciate the support of all our partners here in Alamance County, both public and private. Thank you.
Thank you.
Wonderful, thank you so much.
Thank y'all for that information. It's very interesting, on page fifteen, the top occupations that the folks are looking to get into, and Dr. Gatewood and I have talked about possibly doing a truck driving school there at the community college?
Yes.
So maybe we can work that into our new facility and green, like, green level if that passes.
That is a great idea. Excuse me. All right, next on our agenda will be a presentation by Emily Sutton of the Hall River Assembly about the Mountain Valley Pipeline Project. And Ms. Sutton comes forward, um, I will just, uh, mention that, um, in consideration of these, this agenda item and the one following, where Sean Day is going to present on behalf of the Mountain Valley Pipeline Project. Each presenter, um, is going to be allotted twenty minutes from when they begin. Commissioners, I would ask that y'all wait until the twenty minutes is over before we start jumping on with questions, so that they can get, because maybe your question will be answered by what, what's going to be forthcoming, and that will give them a chance to get through it and not worry that they're gonna lose time or another point's gonna have to fall by the wayside. And then we'll take, uh, time as y'all need to, uh, discuss what needs to be discussed. Um, and also in anticipation of it, I want to quickly refer back to what Ms. Ballinger said in her public comment about the, the Alamance County Board of Commissioners does not actually have any permitting authority over the pipeline. She made some good points about, uh, about what a resolution could mean to the community or to the process, but we actually, it's very important that the public is well informed and understands that we don't actually have permitting authority over the pipeline. So, and, uh, Ms. Sutton wanted to go second.
Can I ask a question about what you just said?
Yes.
And maybe Clyde can help to answer it. Um, so this county doesn't have countywide zoning, but I've read where other counties have been able to either slow the process or stop the process of the pipeline through zoning ordinances, and, um, and we do have some land use ordinances, like we have a high-impact land ordinance. So do we have any ordinances right now that could come into play in this discussion, or don't we have some powers delegated to us in the legislature to pass certain ordinances that could be effective?
In, in this area of the state has maintained jurisdiction through the Utilities Commission, and the, as far as condemnation of land, the state has a whole chapter on how that's done. And that is done through a Chapter forty A condemnation process. That's done through a forty A, Chapter forty A condemnation process. So really, the, the, uh, purpose of a resolution would, would be to present the sense of the board to the company and to the property owners as to what is important and what your concerns are, and after you hear all the information, uh, I would suggest that it be based upon fact. That's what a court would look at. And, and zoning issues, as you're saying, we don't have zoning. Jordan Lake rules would fall into play if you're impacting a stream bed. Uh, the pipeline, folks out of Raleigh will make sure that the precautions are taken. But we really don't have an ordinance that would, um, impact this process one way or the other.
And we couldn't make one, an ordinance, we couldn't decide to pass an ordinance. I mean, we have the ability to pass countywide zoning if that was the, um-
If you, if you so choose to do that, but I've been told never mentioned it's anywhere in a commissioner meeting, so.
But this will come through one of our watersheds, which is covered under the Jordan Lake rules, is that correct?
Jordan Lake would, would cover that and protect that.
Okay, and we had to adopt those rules because the state said we needed to.
Yes.
I think I'm already testing a lot of conventional wisdom this election year, with some of my positions.
See, this county only has the authority the state gives it. The county is a subdivision of the state.
Right.
Folks in Raleigh decide to produce a general law that statewide, that would give counties the authority, then they could do so, but it couldn't be specific to one county, you'd have to have a, a general law.
Well, maybe when I hear some of the presentations, it'll make me think of more specific, I might re-ask the question, but more specifically directed, just to be sure.
Great, well, if it weren't worth having the discussion today, we wouldn't have put it on the agenda, so that's why we're here, even though, but it is important that people understand that we're not here to authorize the building of a pipeline, that that is a very important distinction. So, Ms. Sutton, go ahead.
I'd like to pass out a couple of fact sheets to you all. Um, and I know I sent you a couple reports that I'm gonna reference in this presentation, but I agree that your decisions to oppose this pipeline should be based on fact, so I want you to have all the facts that we have. Um, so, I, my name is Emily Sutton, I live at two-six-oh-two Saks Bahav Bethlehem Church Road in Alamance County. I'm here today as the Hall River Keeper with Hall River Assembly. We represent over a thousand members in the watershed and a lot of the landowners who have come to speak today. So before I get started, just, can I have a quick show of hands to see how many landowners or how many people in this audience are here to oppose the pipeline?
Ms. Sutton, that's not, we're not going to do that.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Because that's, um, asking the audience for-
Oh, I'm sorry.
-information. Your presentation should be to the board.
Okay, my apology. Um, well, thank you so much for allowing us the time to speak today, and I'm just gonna go over a couple facts that we already know, and then get into some of the concerns that we have with this pipeline. So, so far, we've seen that the diameter of the pipe is about twenty-four inches. To put that in perspective, a basketball is about the size of eighteen inches, and so it's about double that size. Um, this proposed extension is about seventy-two miles from Pennsylvania to a terminus in Alamance County, or from Virginia, I'm sorry, to a terminus in Alamance County near, uh, Alamance Community College in Graham. So far, this pipeline is set to be fourteen hundred pounds per square inch of pressure. With a pipeline of that size and pressure, the blast zone is about six hundred feet on each side, so that's a radius, so a diameter of about twelve hundred feet. The evacuation zone for a pipeline of that size is about two thousand and fifty-one feet each side, so about a mile in diameter. This pipeline would affect the Haw and the Dan watersheds. So far, the proposed route crosses at least eighty-one streams, and a couple of the alternative proposed routes cross the mainstem of the Haw twice. The Haw is in the Jordan Lake watersheds, so those rules would apply. The cost estimates so far are between three hundred and fifty to five hundred million dollars, and those costs we've seen have ballooned in other situations where pipelines have expanded, or if there's been work orders, or, um, stop work orders. And so we've already seen that there's been a stop work order along the whole stretch of the three-hundred-mile pipeline in Pennsylvania and West Virginia because of a court case. So, as it stands right now, the right-of-way for this pipeline would be a hundred to a hundred and twenty-five feet of temporary easement, and then the permanent easement would go down to fifty feet. All right, so M V P L L C has presented a lot of the economic benefits that they are promising the county, and because there have been so many pipelines in our region, there have been a lot of independent firms who have done studies to prove that those are a, a little misleading. So I want to go through some of those. Um, I've provided you all with a Synapse study, um, digitally, and that study has, uh, three different states, Virginia, North Carolina, and South Carolina, have enough existing infrastructure as it is now to, um, support all of the existing growth and the projected demand for fracked gas in those regions without this pipeline. So this pipeline would create few, if any, permanent jobs. Most of the jobs that have been created in other pipelines, or as we look to the M V P Main Line in Virginia, those jobs are accessory jobs, so retail, lodging, restaurants, all of those temporary, um, booms in the economic industry, but as soon as those, um, additional people are gone, there's a bust. Most of the jobs that are actually associated with the construction of the pipeline are filled by out-of-state workers. And we've seen along the Main Line that as a result of construction, the existing businesses are actually losing customers, and new businesses are deterred from starting new businesses. And so, um, Ms. Warren earlier spoke about the tax value lost, and that's a huge factor that isn't been counted in that cost. So there's a couple additional external costs that haven't been factored into this projected cost. Um, the reduction in net tax value due to changes in property tax. Um, and then we've seen in other regions where the public service costs for counties or municipalities have increased due to, um, increased need for police force, fire department training, all of those additional costs. And actually, on July seventh in Franklin County, Virginia, um, the municipality planned to ask M V P to actually cover those additional costs that the county is incurring due to the increase in public service costs, because they weren't, um, equipped to handle those costs as a county. And as of July sixteenth, M V P has been issued a hundred and fifty water quality violations, and that's along the Main Line. Um, and so that's a cost that the counties would be paying for mitigation and staffing to go through those inspections for years to come. So this slide has a lot of text, it's from a- And so that's a cost that the counties would be paying for mitigation and staffing to go through those inspections for years to come. So this slide has a lot of text. It's from a economic report that I've provided you all. I'm just gonna quickly read through it because it's very important. So the cost of lost property value, reduced tax revenues, dampened economic development and ecosystem productivity in the study area, we total between 119.1 million and 138, 130.8 million per year, and possessed as long as that right-of-way exists. So those are costs without any catastrophic events such as an explosion or a landslide. The effect on ecosystem services from clearing land for the pipeline corridor, the impact on land values resulting from buyer's concern about pipeline safety, and reductions in economic vitality stemming from changes in the landscape will occur with or without any discrete extreme events like landslides or mudslides or explosions. So that's if everything goes as planned. So a lot of the landowners have already come up and spoken about concerns that they've had, but I'm just gonna quickly go over some of the bigger points. The impacts to the tax credits are a huge concern that we've seen along the ACP and the eastern part of the state. If a landowner has their land in a forestry easement, that easement would have to be cut for the, all of the trees in the forest would have to be cut along that temporary easement. And so that would butt them out of that forestry credit. And in North Carolina with present use tax laws, they would have to pay back those taxes for three years, and that would be a huge cost for small families. We've already seen that along the Atlantic Coast Pipeline, that property values have gone down for homeowners. And it also makes it hard to sell property. We have landowners that are here that are actually trying to sell their homes, and it's made it a lot harder for them to sell their property. So we've also seen that the surveyors with MVP have been very persistent in pressuring landowners. One of the most recent examples of this was there was a letter sent to all of the landowners who had explicitly denied access to their land. And this letter said that they, they're pressuring landowners to allow access to property to, quote, "resolve this matter without litigation." MVP is presenting this project as a done deal to community members, and it is not a done deal. There are at least 20 permits that have to be approved before anyone can even threaten eminent domain. But with stress about that being proposed to these landowners, it's very scary. And so there's a lot of pressure that these surveyors are putting on the landowners in this community. So other ways that it'll affect the community outside of the landowner realm is the waterways. A lot of people in this community, including myself, are on well water. And during construction, we've seen in other cases that in rocky subsoils such as the Piedmont, those drills that are drilling down three feet to lay the pipe below the ground are often covered in heavy volatile organic chemicals. And they'll go down into the ground and blast the rock away. And those blastings can often cause fissures in the bedrock and contaminate groundwater. If the groundwater is contaminated, the wells around it could be contaminated. And any cost for groundwater or well water testing is on the responsibility of the landowner. That testing is very expensive, and so it's likely that any of that water contamination would go undetected until there were serious health impacts. This would also contaminate surface water. If all of those heavy volatile organic chemicals get in the surface water, it affects a lot of downstream water users. These are chemicals that can't be removed in traditional water treatment practices. And the process for laying the pipe in the stream involves damming up the stream and getting a flow meter to go, to take the flow around that. Now, that means that in these streams where there are very high, steep buffers and steep banks, those heavy machinery will have to clear the trees around that to get down into the streams. And once that dam is burst, all of that sediment and those heavy metals that are on the machinery and the toxins from the drill heads will be released into the surface water, not to mention all the sediment-carrying nutrient loads that will affect the Jordan Lake rules later on and drown aquatic habitat. So I just want to include this slide because we've already seen, I mentioned earlier, that MVP LLC had 150 water quality violations. This is one of the most dramatic that we've seen along the Main Line, and this is, this was a foot-deep mudslides across roads in Franklin County. And that area was in flat area. A lot of Franklin County is mountainous, so I want to make that distinction, that this was a flat area. As of August 1st, MVP LLC had two stop-work orders. I mentioned earlier that FERC issued a stop-work order for the project this past Friday. So I know that Alamance County has spent a lot of money on recreation for the park service and for the Hall River Trail. The Hall River has become such a destination for tourism in this area, and if sediment and erosion impacts the Hall River and the streams the way that that has in Franklin County, Virginia, it would be a dramatic loss in tourism and recreation use and a big hit to the park service. So a couple quick other violations that MVP LLC has incurred in the northern part of us. You'll see the trees have been cut beyond the agreed-upon line in some counties. That was in the Bent Mountain, Virginia area. And another violation that they've been issued are using smaller roads or even private roads in some situations to carry heavy machinery, and the roads weren't constructed to bear the weight of those machinery. And so that's a cost that goes on the county for repairing the roads or for private landowners if it's a more private area. And I just mentioned all of those examples from the LLC, the Mountain Valley LLC north of us, because this is a fairly new LLC. So we don't have a lot of track record to look at. But I bring up those examples because they have set a track record for themselves already, and it's pretty dismal. So I've mentioned these pipeline explosions because I know they're rare, but they're a serious risk and a threat that we have to consider. In the past two months, there have been four explosions. Luckily, most of those pipeline routes have been in remote areas. There was one death from an explosion, but they've been in fairly remote areas. This route goes through very populated areas, including schools, churches, and the Alamance Community College. And in the study that I've provided you, the SYNAP study, they compared pipes constructed after 2010 are failing at a rate similar to pipes constructed before 1940. Some of those newer pipes, they were in the ground for less than six months before they exploded. That was one example. And emergency first responders are often not equipped to handle catastrophes of this size. Methane leaks can go undetected because this is an odorless and colorless gas, and so it can be undetected until there's a major catastrophe like an explosion or groundwater So this is a quote from the CEO of the TransCanada Pipeline. He said, "This is truly a best-in-class pipeline, and we look forward to many years of safe, reliable, and efficient operation on behalf of our customers." That was when the pipeline was constructed in January, and there was an explosion the same year in June. That's the photo of the aftermath. So it has completely destroyed that entire area. So some other safety concerns, just in 2017, there was 297 significant incidents, and a significant incident is deemed as one that has fatalities or costs more than $50,000. So anything lower than that, we have no numbers for. So 297 significant incidents just last year. So so far, there is one proposed compressor station. That compressor station is in Rockingham County. A compressor station can take up anywhere from 3 to 20 acres, and this is a huge facility that runs 24/7, 365 days a year. So if this pipeline was approved and it was ended in Graham, in order to take that gas to any further lines, it would have to be re-pressured and most likely have another compressor station at that terminus, which is directly adjacent to the Hall River and directly adjacent to Alamance Community College. Because this is a huge facility with a lot of fracked gas, it's a big risk for explosions and fires. So we've already mentioned a couple of the environmental issues, but I really want to drive home the impacts to health. So residents living near compressor stations often have a lot of respiratory impacts from methane exposure. Those can include sinus problems, throat irritation, nasal irritation, severe headaches, and a lot of stress that goes along with living next to a really loud facility that is running and has lights and heavy traffic all of the time. So what this means for Alamance County. I know I've given you a lot of facts and a lot of things to think about, but I really just want you all to remember that this is not an economic benefit for our county. This is an unneeded pipeline that puts our county at risk, and it's not necessary. We've already spoken about landowner issues. The landowners and the community members are looking to you all to join us in opposition of this. And the water quality concerns affect people outside of that landowner area, but also affect over 2 million water users downstream if this was approved and could contaminate surface water. So we are asking you all to sign a resolution in opposition of this. If you sign that resolution, it would speak so loudly to stand with us and stand with other municipalities and counties where this pipeline is proposed to pass through, and we could together speak to Governor Cooper and other state agencies and revoke those permits and stop this pipeline. So thank you all so much for your time. If you have any follow-up questions, I'll be here, but there's also a lot of resources at our website for you. Thank you.
Thank you.
If you'll stay there.
Sure.
I mean, this will be the time for commissioners to ask you questions if we have any...
Sure.
So. Do you have any questions?
I don't have any questions. I got a comment. It looks like a lot of reasons not to have it, but we'll have to hear the other side before I can really have educated questions to ask.
Great.
Um, are there other municipalities that have taken a stand against this so far?
We've spoken to a lot of municipalities, and they're waiting to see what Alamance County does. So Burlington, we spoke to them. We have a meeting with several municipalities in the next couple of weeks to propose the same thing.
How about Rockingham County?
We've talked to Rockingham County and the municipalities within Rockingham, and they're waiting to see what the county does as well.
I think, has there not been some boards in Virginia? Of course, theirs are supervisors, not commissioners. Have they not taken stance against this?
They have, yes. And I can't speak very well to that, unfortunately. I'm siloed in my watershed, but my colleague Caroline Hansley has worked really closely with all of those people up there fighting pipelines and knows a lot more about that. And so she could answer those questions later on if you'd like.
Do you have any other questions?
Those significant incidences, that was a national figure?
It was.
You didn't speak to the issue of alternatives to pipelines for...
You're right, I didn't. So I saw that since 2013, there was $80 million of revenue generated from solar industry. And solar, North Carolina is second on the East Coast for solar industry, and it's only growing. So there are all alternatives.
Any more questions right now?
I do.
Okay, sure.
Just a couple. A lot of the concerns that you raise are sort of global objections to natural gas pipelines in general, it seemed to me. Are your objections more about this pipeline for this community, or would you, the groups that you represent be more opposed just to natural gas?
I think it's a combination of both. We don't want natural gas. There are a lot of alternatives that we could retrofit businesses that need, that need fracked gas. We could retrofit those businesses in order to support solar industries instead of spending billions of dollars on an industry that is dying. So I don't want it in this community, but this is an unnecessary industry for the entire region and on a more broad scale as well.
And when, I think that you had said something about that, that if the pipeline comes, then it will dampen economic development, which is pretty much directly opposite of what one of the speakers in the public comment had said. What can you say to support that statement, that economic development in the region would go, be less likely with a natural gas pipeline?
So that's with construction. We've seen along other routes, along the ACP, that developments have refused to buy land near where the, where the proposed route is supposed to go, because that dampens their economic value for their tax break, and it deters customers while that process is happening, while the construction is happening.
So you're saying where that relates to residential development or the development within a certain area near the pipeline itself, but you don't have, do you have something to say, or do you have a response to those who say that the availability of natural gas is necessary to attract new industry?
The facts that I've seen are based on residential, and I know that there are a lot of, a lot of industries that are saying that they need this gas, so I don't have a direct response to that, no.
Okay. You mentioned that it crosses the mainstem of the Hall River twice. Can you help me know where that is? I have pretty good knowledge of northern Alamance County.
Sure. So these are proposed alternative routes that were submitted a couple of months ago. So one of the proposed routes would cross, let's see, I believe near 85, and then be on the, on the west side of the Haw, and it would cross directly below 54 again. So it would just be on the side of 85, run along that side of the Haw until it gets to near where the Boyd wastewater treatment plan is, and cross again on the Haw to that terminus that's below 54.
Okay. So on the southern side of the interstate?
Yes.
Okay. That makes sense. And you said that it would create few permanent jobs directly related to construction, but you don't know anything, do you, about how many new jobs would be created related to economic development if new industry does come, related to the availability of natural gas, right?
I don't have that answer. Not to say that someone in our team doesn't have that answer, and I'm happy to provide any follow-up information, but I don't have that right off the top of my head.
And you mentioned that there were increased public service costs in Virginia related to the protesters?
Mm-hmm.
I mean, that there were increased public service costs in Virginia. The local governments had to spend more money to, for local law enforcement and other things, but aren't those costs related to the presence of the protesters themselves? That's not because there was safety issues or something that the pipe, the company had done?
So we've seen that same figure also with routes along the ACP where there wasn't as much protest. And a lot of those costs are because they're out-of-state people coming in, and a lot of it is actually with the workers that are here. And so I'm sure that some of those costs were with protesters, but overwhelmingly, a lot of those costs are because of the workers who are here. And just looking at the ACP example, there weren't as many protesters, and those costs were still there.
But they, those, did those local governments go to the company and ask for them to help pay for those costs?
I'm not sure. I'll follow up with that question.
And I'm very interested in how the impact is to the individual landowner in Alamance County. And what I've been told or heard is that, is to the extent that for an individual property owner who may have been able to survey out their acres into building sites that they have for their children or grandchildren, that the pipeline coming through would actually take away one or more of those building sites. Do you have any knowledge about that?
So I only have the knowledge that landowners have given me from that. That's happened in a couple of situations where the, the proposed easement, the proposed route would cut through where a future house site was. So other than just the narrative that I'm hearing, I don't have any more information that you have.
And have you heard anything about people who are in the process of building a home, either having already dug footings or having construction scheduled, maybe permits applied for, who have had to change their plans or stop work because of being concerned about the pipeline?
So I know that one example of a landowner that had, he was building his house along the proposed route, and he did not stop. There is another situation where the landowners are still waiting to hear to see if, where the route will go, because they want to sell a parcel or build their son's house or anything along that route, and it's, they haven't... And it's, they haven't gone forward with that process because there's so much uncertainty and so much pressure around the surveyors and where that line will be.
Right. And my last question has to do with the stream crossings and so forth. When the pipeline crosses a stream, my understanding is that they clear-cut and essentially chop out a section of that stream. I guess from your presentation, they dam it and create a way for the water to get around so it has drainage. But they're going down into the dirt and clearing the whole thing and putting the pipeline through. And then, is nothing allowed to grow back over that? So, there's no stream buffer as far as vegetation that's allowed?
So, as far as I've understood, the pipeline, even through a stream crossing, also, it's the same for the easements. And so, it would be a 50-foot easement where there would be grass, but no trees or like more dense vegetative cover.
And do you know anything about the Jordan Lake rules and how that applies to that situation? Because I serve on the Jordan Lake One Water Association group that meets regularly to work. It's a group of local government representatives that work together to help with water quality in the Jordan Lake watershed area, which is vast. And I've learned a lot about stream buffers and how important they are for maintaining water quality. So, is there knowledge about how the Jordan Lake rules intersect with the permitting process for the pipeline?
I'm sure that that would be a really long conversation of negotiating and compromises. But as far as I know, I haven't seen, I mean, there haven't been any other pipelines in my time as the Harbor Keeper to see how that affects the Jordan Lake rules. I'm sure that there will have to be some sediment controls that are a lot more drastic because of the nutrient loads that sediment will carry. But some of the streams that are in this proposed route are also impaired. And so, that would affect a lot of the Jordan Lake rules because they're already on the impaired waterways list.
Okay. Thank you. That's all my questions. Does anybody else have any questions related to what else?
That was good. Amy, you did good.
Thank you.
Lot of questions to answer.
Thank you all so much.
Thank you.
All right. Mr. Day?
Good morning, Madam Chair.
Good morning.
Members of the Commission. Thank you for the opportunity to be here today. Working Communications and Outreach for the MVP Southgate Project Team. Joined today by members of the MVP Southgate Project Team as well. Before I get started, I would like to hand out a couple of documents related to the project here just to make sure that we have some information here.
Thank you.
All right. So, before I get started on the details of the scope and purpose and need for the MVP Southgate Project, I did want to give you a little bit of background about the joint venture that is proposing the MVP Southgate Project. Mountain Valley Pipeline LLC is a joint venture comprised of partner companies. And the two primary partners are EQT Midstream, which is based in Pennsylvania, and Nextera U.S. Gas Assets, which is a subsidiary of Nextera Energy. And that's a diversified clean energy company that is the largest generator of electricity by wind and solar in North America. Other partners include Con Edison, WGL Midstream, which is a division, a subsidiary of WGL, Washington Gas and Light, and RGC Resources, an affiliate of Roanoke Gas in Virginia. The MVP Southgate Project route is represented on this map in green. You can see it is proposed as a diameter of 24 inches and would run approximately 72 miles. It would start in Pennsylvania County, Virginia, near the termination point of the Mountain Valley Pipeline, which is represented in blue, and comes in from the northeast on this map. The Mountain Valley Pipeline is a 42-inch diameter natural gas interstate transmission line that runs about 303 miles from northern West Virginia down to the Transco 165 Station in Pennsylvania County. Construction on that project started earlier this year. On Friday, the Federal Energy Regulatory Commission did issue an order to stop work on the project as a result of a court decision involving documentation related to, or documentation for rural land management and the Forest Service. And it relates to about a three-mile stretch of the proposed route, so about 1% of the overall route. It's our understanding that these agencies have the necessary documentation and information to satisfy the court's concerns. So, every indication we've seen is that this is a very temporary situation. And the MVP Project Team is hopeful that construction will resume soon. The project is scheduled for completion and in-service in the first quarter of 2019. Now, the MVP Southgate Project would continue along an existing right-of-way through Pennsylvania County. This is a Transco pipeline right-of-way. So, running down through Pennsylvania County, past the Berry Hill Industrial Park, before crossing into North Carolina and Rockingham County. It would tie into the East Tennessee Natural Gas Transmission Line, which is represented in red on this map. And then would continue into Rockingham County before hooking to the southeast, entering Alamance County, and ultimately terminating an existing interconnect facility southeast of Graham. As Mr. McCauley mentioned earlier, PSNC Energy has signed a long-term shipping agreement to take natural gas from MVP Southgate to serve its existing and future customers. There are two proposed compressor stations on the MVP Southgate Project. One at the start, or near the start, in Pennsylvania County, Virginia. And then a smaller one in Rockingham County, near that interconnect with the East Tennessee line. As an interstate natural gas transmission line, the MVP Southgate Project would be regulated and fall under the jurisdiction of the Federal Energy Regulatory Commission. Other state and federal agencies would have a role in reviewing the project. Those include the U.S. Army Corps of Engineers, the U.S. Fish and Wildlife Service, and state Departments of Environmental Quality. It is a lengthy review process, and it is very important for us to build relationships with officials and agencies at the local, state, and federal levels because we want to make sure everyone has the facts about this project and its purpose and need. So, since we announced the project in April, we quickly set out to reach out to local, state, and federal officials and agencies to bring them up to speed on the project proposal. In May, we entered the pre-filing process with the Federal Energy Regulatory Commission, and that kicked off a series of open-house meetings. On June 25th, we held a meeting in an open house in Burlington, Pladium Event Center, drew about 100 people. We also held open houses in Rockingham County and Pennsylvania County, Virginia. We anticipate filing a formal application with the Federal Energy Regulatory Commission later this year. And we're hopeful that the FERC will issue a certificate of public convenience and necessity in time for construction to start in the first quarter of 2020. And that would allow us to complete construction and bring the project in service by the end of that year to meet the needs of folks during the 2020-2021 winter season. Now, there are a number of reasons why demand for natural gas has been increasing and why this project is necessary. Over the last 10 years or so, federal regulations governing coal-fired power plants have tightened, and that has led to a decline in use of coal for electricity generation. At the same time, the U.S. has a very abundant supply of natural gas and the modern technologies that allow for accessible, accessing that natural gas. The issue becomes a matter of matching supply and demand, which is where we're at right now. So, existing infrastructure systems are constrained. And forecasting out continued growth of demand, more pipeline infrastructure is necessary to meet demand and match that supply with demand. Natural gas that would come through the MVP Southgate Project would originate in the Marcellus Shale Region. And that is more affordable natural gas than gas that comes from the Gulf of Mexico region or other regions. Specifically in this region, Transco and East Tennessee Natural Gas Transmission Lines are the only sources of natural gas. In 2013, the State Utilities Commission recognized that there is a need for additional interstate pipeline capacity in North Carolina. I know this region has experienced significant population growth, and the State Budget Office is projecting North Carolina's population to grow by nearly 2 million more people between 2020 and 2035. And all of that is driving increased demand for natural gas. And that's also why there's consensus among reputable energy research organizations and agencies that demand for natural gas is expected to increase well into the future. U.S. Energy Information Administration, in its latest annual energy outlook, concluded that U.S. natural gas demand would continue to increase. Wood Mackenzie is a globally respected, highly regarded international energy consulting firm that has also performed multiple analyses of demand and supply in the southeast and mid-Atlantic regions and reached the same conclusion. Natural gas has played a notable role in the reduction of carbon emissions in the U.S. over the last 10 to 15 years. The Energy Information Administration credits the increased use of coal and the declining, or the increased use of natural gas and the declining use of coal for contributing to an 11.6% decline in carbon dioxide emissions between 2008 and 2017. Natural gas use is also much cleaner in terms of emitting less sulfur dioxide and nitrogen oxides, particulates that are tied to respiratory illness. So, from an economic perspective and from a public health perspective, natural gas has clear advantages. And all of this is helping to drive demand. Now, for Alamance County and North Carolina, the MVP Southgate Project would provide an additional source of natural gas, and it would be more affordable natural gas, as I mentioned, than gas that is derived from the Gulf of Mexico region. The project would provide additional capacity to meet the increasing natural gas demands of the region. And it would also enhance the reliability of the region's existing infrastructure system. The MVP Southgate Project would carry short-term and long-term economic benefits. The short-term benefits would revolve around construction activity. FTI Consulting is a highly respected international business consulting firm that does economic analyses using the industry standard in-plan model. It's the same model that's used by government agencies and by other leading consulting organizations to determine economic impacts. They concluded that the MVP Southgate Project's construction would generate 1,260 jobs in North Carolina during the peak phase of employment in 2020. Mountain Valley would spend $106 million on goods and services in North Carolina and generate 6.2 million in aggregate state and local tax revenues. Now, construction crews also would be participants in the local economy and the regional economy. It would be eating at local restaurants, staying in local hotels, shopping at local stores, all of which would have a positive economic impact. On a long-term basis, the project would generate $3.7 million in additional property tax revenue to the two counties through which it would pass in North Carolina. That some Alamance County would stand to receive 1.3 million. And that is on an ongoing annual basis. The direct use benefits associated with the increased supply of natural gas through the MVP Southgate Project are significant. There would be an opportunity for more employers to access cleaner, affordable, reliable natural gas through their local distribution company, such as PSNC Energy. As an interstate transmission line, this would be an open-access line. And what that means is, in the future, if there were a large industrial employer or manufacturer or if another local distribution company wanted to provide gas or wanted to access gas from the MVP Southgate Project, they would have an opportunity to pursue installation of a TAP on the line to feed operations. There also is potential for fuel-switching savings associated with transportation fleet services, as well as conversion of home and business heating and other systems. Now, natural gas pipelines are not rare in the U.S. There are more than 2.4 million miles of natural gas lines in the U.S., including more than 300,000 miles of interstate and intrastate transmission lines. On this map, represented in green are the interstate lines, and in blue are the intrastate lines. MVP Southgate would be an interstate line. And as you can see, there is not much infrastructure in North Carolina on this map. Here are the steps for construction during the process for MVP Southgate. Construction process is similar for a natural gas pipeline compared to any other kind of pipeline, whether that's a water main or a wastewater line, any kind of pipeline. The sequence of construction is very similar. And that involves clearing and grading and trenching on the right-of-way, stringing the pipe along the right-of-way and welding segments together, lowering that into the trench, backfilling, then testing, and then move into the restoration phase. Safety is our number-one priority. So, natural gas pipelines are widely recognized by the federal government as by far the safest way to transport natural gas. In addition to that safety record, though, the MVP Southgate Project Team intends to incorporate a number of overlapping and redundant safety features. And those include having the steel pipe inspected at the mill. It would be at least 3/8ths of an inch thick. It would have a protective coating, and cathodic protection beds would be installed along the right-of-way to prevent corrosion. We would conduct construction inspections, including X-rays of the welds. The line would be buried at least three feet below the surface. We would pressure-test it before operation, and we would be doing 24-hour-a-day, seven-day-a-week remote monitoring of the project once it is in service. Safety valves would be remotely controlled. We would conduct periodic inspection and, of course, work with local authorities on proper pipeline procedure and response protocols. Now, the regulatory process for a natural gas transmission line is significant and lengthy. And we are committed through that process to make sure that we have developed plans that incorporate best practices. And during the course of the regulatory process, we develop plans that cover essentially every facet of construction. So, that includes transportation, noise, dust, erosion, sediment control, stormwater management. All of those are evaluated and incorporated into the regulatory process. And so, when you get to the point where the FERC issues a certificate of public convenience and necessity and construction would begin, then the project team has inspectors that would monitor construction. And then there are state and federal inspectors that also would monitor construction. And anytime there is any kind of an issue where something needs adjustment or if something is out of compliance, it is documented and reported. So, if that involves a tree falling outside of the line of disturbance during tree felling operations, which are inherently dangerous and can be unpredictable if you're cutting down trees, that's documented and recorded and reported. If a state or a federal inspector notices an issue of non-compliance, they document it in what is described as a notice of violation. Sometimes it is referred to as a citation, but that is not. The popular definition of the citation suggests there's a court appearance or some sort of punitive action, and that is not the case. It is designed as essentially a documented formal warning. And it is provided as notice that this is not in compliance, and the project team would then move quickly to rectify the situation. So, it is designed as a collaborative process. Everyone is moving in the same direction to make sure the project is done safely and responsibly so that it can be the best project it can possibly be. On this slide, you can see on the left is an image of typical construction on the right-of-way. And on the right is a scene of a restored right-of-way. And so, easement agreements are tailored to meet the needs of the landowner and specific to the parcel. So, as I mentioned, this is a lengthy process, and it is a FERC-regulated process. But we want to have strong working relationships with officials and agencies at the local, state, and federal level. We think this project will bring significant benefits, both in the short term and in the long term, for the region. It's not just about economic growth and development, but also about economic and energy stability for the region. And safety, as I mentioned, is our top priority, and everything else flows from that. We will keep you updated on what's going on with the project during the regulatory process and without having to take any questions.
I got a question. Those control valves, are they below the ground or above the ground?
Control valves? The safety control valves? That's a question that I may have to get back to you on that because they're remotely monitored.
Oh, okay.
But then there is also a way that crew could manually also execute those.
I have some questions.
Yes.
So, a long time ago, I was a respiratory therapist for five years.
So a long time ago, I was a respiratory therapist for five years, and I handled a lot of oxygen cylinders, size E cylinders and H cylinders, quite a bit smaller than a 24-inch diameter. In my training, I was given the fear of making sure that those are handled very carefully because they, at least the E cylinder, I'm not sure about the H, they were at 2,200 pounds per square inch. And I remember seeing pictures of one sort of exploding, and oxygen is not a volatile gas that supports combustion, but it's not.
Right.
And it looked, this happened at a nurses' station, it looked like a bomb went off in the nurses' station. So I was a little bit alarmed by knowing that this pipeline's gonna have 1,400 PSI normal.
Well, that's actually the maximum allowable operating pressure. Normal operating pressure would generally be probably closer to about 2/3 of that.
Still is a lot of pressure.
Yes.
And you mentioned about the stoppage that was ordered.
Yes, sir.
Is that the one that was in the Jefferson National Forest?
Yes, sir.
So what I read was that the U.S. Court of Appeals, or the Fourth Circuit, made that stop order based on, it was more, I didn't think that was just a paperwork issue like you alluded to, but it was just the fact that you had very optimistic assertions about the sedimentation and erosion impact of the pipeline. That was contrary to, I guess, the Forest Service own rules, and so...
Well, the court's decision related to the documentation in the case that the Forest Service made in granting the permit, and then subsequent to that, the Federal Energy Regulatory Commission, after that ruling, then issued the order for work to stop. But it did relate to the documentation in case that the Forest Service used kind of the rationale through their permitting process.
So you feel that this is a temporary situation for continuation of the pipeline?
Yes, sir.
So one question I had had to do with the properties that this would go through.
Yes.
Do you have a sense of how many property-owned properties that this would impact directly?
Across the entire route?
No, just in Alamance County.
I don't have the figure for specific to Alamance County, but what I can tell you is, we're very early in the process, and just in the pre-filing process, and there's a proposed route right now that is based off of basically desktop analysis. And throughout the process, in order to inform development of the best possible route, survey work is really important and kind of critical to that, to inform the development of the route, because there are features on a parcel that may not be readily visible on desktop analysis, but survey crews would learn about when they actually are out on the ground. And so, that's why the survey process is very important. It's about informing the development of the route. Landowners don't give up any rights during the survey process, and at this point, we're doing surveying across a 300-foot-wide corridor. The temporary right-of-way for this project would be 100 feet, and then the permanent easement would be 50 feet. During the regulatory process, though, agencies, including the FERC, will request we analyze alternative segments, and they have already done that, which is one of the references earlier about two crossings of the Hall River. While the initially proposed route did not include any crossings of the Hall River, two of the requested alternatives that the FERC had asked us to analyze and look at did include crossing the river.
So along that same line, and talking about individual property owners, one thing that I'm concerned about is that studies have shown that oftentimes, well, usually most, maybe most of the time, when a project that is challenging to the environment, such as a pipeline, or maybe an industry that has some environmental concerns, that they end up oftentimes, or more often than not, going through properties of individuals that are of low wealth, don't have the resources to really fight back. So I'd be really interested to know the demographic profiles, or social, economic profiles of the owners of the properties where this does, you know, where it would go through. So we've heard, I've gotten lots of emails from people, probably not low-wealth people, but I imagine that they'd be going through some pretty low-wealth properties that, you know, and just concerned that we're making sure that we hear their voices as well.
Well, and so there are a number of factors that are all part of the process of developing that route. I can tell you that about half of the route actually is co-located along existing rights-of-way. So whether that's a...
So you're talking about where it's already existing?
Yeah, where there's already an existing right-of-way, so like a transmission, like a Duke Energy Transmission Line, or in the case in Rockingham in Pennsylvania County, Virginia, along the Transco right-of-way, which is already an existing right-of-way. And so, in order to minimize impact, what we're trying to do to the greatest extent possible is locate this project in close proximity to those existing rights-of-way.
So Ms. Sutton talked about some of the chemicals that are used during the construction, and how some of those might get into both the groundwater, and then get into wells, and then on surface water, too, and get into the Hall River system. How would you respond to those concerns?
So during construction, especially as it relates to water body crossings, there are different ways to cross a water body. One of those methods is the open-cut method, which involves essentially damming half of the stream, or a little more than half of the stream, and having the open cut where the pipeline is installed, and then kind of switching it, moving to the other side after you have a very, it would be a very controlled release and diversion of the water, so you can minimize any kind of turbidity in the stream. As far as additives in drilling, if there is a horizontal directional drill that is used to bore under a water body, the drilling uses bentonite mud or clay that also would include, if it included additives, they would be NSF/NSI 60 certified, which is an industry standard, and it is the same level threshold that is used for drilling a water well. One more point related to that, though, the MVP Southgate Project team would offer to do pre-construction and post-construction testing of well water, of water supplies.
So, reading of the process that's been going on in other counties, there are like large staging areas that are needed and storage areas for equipment, I guess, and supplies in this process, that can be very large and create a lot of traffic, truck traffic, noisy traffic, dirty traffic. Do you have those sites kind of identified for Alamance County?
At this point, we don't because of the nature of the route development, since we're still in pre-filing, we've not filed a formal application with the FERC yet, and we're still doing the survey work and still analyzing alternatives. And so, that's the kind of thing that, as we move farther through the process, we would have to look at potential sites for lay-down yards for machinery and equipment and crews.
So that, that sounds disruptive.
Those processes would also be tightly regulated under construction plans, though, also, as I mentioned, like the transportation plans, and all of those are incorporated in that process.
The economic benefit that you mentioned for Alamance County would increase our tax revenue by 1.3 million dollars.
Yes, sir.
What's the basis for that estimate?
The basis for that estimate is the in-plan model, which is utilized by FTI Consulting. As I mentioned, this is an industry-standard input-output model that FTI Consulting and other leading consulting organizations and government agencies use when they're trying to analyze the potential economic benefits of a large project of this nature.
So I talked to our tax administrator, I guess...
Our tax administrator, I think, is nearby.
Oh, yeah.
Would you like for him to come?
Well, that'd be great. He can verify what I'm about to say.
You just quit what he said.
I thought that might be a...
Yeah, that'd be great.
A fun addition to our conversation.
Yeah. So, I don't know much about the Colonial Pipeline. I guess that's not a natural gas pipeline, that's an oil pipeline, or do you know?
I don't, I'm not familiar with the Colonial Pipeline.
They can do both.
Both, okay. Well, it comes through Alamance County.
Yes, they can do both.
And I don't know how many miles of pipeline we have, or what the diameter is or anything, but Mr. Aiken is here, Aikens, excuse me. And, but we get paid about $17,000 worth of tax revenue per year on the Colonial Pipeline. And Jeremy, why don't you explain what you told me about how, who does the assessment, the valuation of the pipeline?
Well, sure. So with the pipeline, that's assessed by the state of North Carolina. It's built through our office, but it's not assessed through our office. I talked to George Hermann, and he's the person that would do that for the state, and I said, you know, George, if you hear this 1.3 number, is that in the ballpark? Because when I look at Colonial Pipeline, I'm not seeing anything close. And he said, there's just so much variability depending on what they put there and how much of it. He said he had gotten no information, and that's been several weeks back, so there may be information that have to check with him. But he said, I don't know how to assess it, and he said to say that it's possible.
Maybe if there's a compressor, if there's a compressor station, that would probably increase the value.
That's right. But he was not sure, and that's something as well. I have no clue as to how the value of pipeline would be dependent on the state for their valuation.
But the $17,000 figure is accurate.
And how much, what is the length of that?
I don't have that on hand, I can't get that.
So my understanding is that most of the gas, the use of the gas that we're talking about coming through this pipeline would be used for producing electricity? So I heard you talk about heating. You know, I retired from Alamance Regional Medical Center. I never heard any issues about having to close down our gas to, during the wintertime when we needed the heat. I don't know about pulp and fabric, but I worked for 35 years. But is that, would that be the primary use of the gas, you know, or is it gonna be for residential heating and industrial heating?
My understanding is PSNC is planning to use the natural gas from MVP Southgate Project for residential, commercial, and business customers. Now, that also would allow it some more flexibility in its other supplies of natural gas.
And I was also reading, so part of the rationale for doing this is that you're saying, and I heard a couple of the other speakers say, that there is a need, because of growth, for more natural gas. Yet, I was reading an independent study that showed that even at peak use days, when you include, I mean, it seems intuitive, yeah, we're gonna add population, and we're gonna have more heating needs and all, but when you actually look at the numbers and you look at other factors that impact the demand for natural gas, like there's a Transco Pipeline, and it's going to be regurgished, and somehow that adds to the capacity, and when you add all those other factors, there is plenty of capacity at peak days forecasted through the year 2030, and it doesn't, wouldn't expect to go up after that. And also, when you consider the impact of renewable sources of energy. So if you go back to that one slide, where there's a bar graph, transitioning to cleaner natural gas, and it compares coal and natural gas that's passed that, go forward, or we'll go further into them. Okay, that one. So what I see, I think, is the left-hand side percent of energy? So, for example, coal today in 2017 comprises 30% of the energy source. Is that what that reflects? Because what I was gonna say is that if you add up for 2017, coal and natural gas together, they're about 60%, provide about 60% of the energy, I guess, to produce electricity? Yeah, for electricity generation, which means the other 40% is something else.
And I presume plays a large role in that as well.
Nuclear, and solar's continuing to play an increasing role. And there's a great potential for wind energy in North Carolina. When I drive to where I grew up in Pennsylvania, I just ridge after ridge have these huge wind farms and producing a lot of electricity.
I believe solar is at about 1% of electricity generation, according to Energy Information Administration today.
I'm pretty sure. So I, you know, I have solar panels on my house, and I drive electric cars, I kind of keep up with it. People accuse me of driving a coal burner. I argue with them, going on. Maybe when I go into West Virginia a little bit, but I think it's a lot greater than that. But anyways, that has to be considered, and there's so much evidence out there now that the actual cost of increasing capacity for renewable energy is now equal to or less than natural gas production and other kinds of energy production. So my solar panels on my house are going, coming up on four years old. Even since then, there's been a lot of improvements in efficiency. And another point, too, is that we buy gas, this gas is coming from outside of our state, but when we install solar, that fuel is coming from the sun, and so we're not exporting our dollars out to other communities and the whole infrastructure for renewable energies with respect to, you know, the maintenance and all for solar and for wind. Those are dollars that keep circulating in our own economy.
Yes.
I don't think I had any other questions.
Let me ask you a question.
Sure.
When the pipeline crosses a field, that's in, that grows things in that field?
Yes.
If it goes underneath a new field, can they continue to use that top of there as to grow their crops?
Well, and so that's something that is discussed, then, during the easement negotiations, as far as what is...
Negotiate there.
Yes, what's necessary and what kind of engineering requirements or considerations need to be taken into account? Yes. I mean, the big issue really is trees.
Right.
And because of the root structure.
I had a few questions. Number one, what is gonna be the county's cost should we have a disaster that's been presented there? Do y'all cover those? Because I know we had a methane gas thing at landfill not long ago, and took fire department a couple of days to get that out. And where does Mountain Valley stand when you have a disaster?
Well, I mean, there would be an expectation that the county and the community would be made whole. And so MVP works with, developing those relationships with authorities and local agencies, both state and federal.
And my biggest question, I guess, is, what are the benefits to these landowners that you're splitting properties on? Because I have a 30-foot right-of-way of a utility on my property, and I've got a good spot to put some septic, but you know what? Can't, can't farm that field.
Right.
And what, what happens? This landowner has this property, and they want to subdivide, and actually, the good dirt is where you guys have already dug it out and put your pipeline. What are they gonna do?
And so, this is one of the reasons why we want to make sure we're doing the surveying process and talking to landowners about unique features specific to a parcel, and whether we can make accommodations that help satisfy those requests, whether that means pushing it, like, to the end or the edge of a property boundary. We want to be able to do that to the greatest extent possible. We have the agencies that request alternatives, and so we're looking at alternatives. I mean, there's a balance that goes into play when you're looking at alternative routes, too, because, so it's possible that you would affect fewer parcels, but then that might involve crossing more acreage of wetlands, or more water body streams. As far as directly discussing impact on a particular parcel and landowner's intent, all of that would be considered during the negotiation phase, which is trying to reach an agreement over.
And what, just tell me, in a sentence, what is the benefit to these landowners? Because I don't know, will they be able to tap onto this and use that cheaper energy and so forth?
Well, as far as residential direct tap, short answer would be likely no, because it has to come through a local...
What's the cost of that, about 50 grand?
Well, it would come through a local distribution company or a major manufacturer, right, that would do something like that. As far as, you know, on a long-term basis, it's, you know, about providing for economic and energy stability and growth for the region.
So basically, from the Rockingham substation to Hall River ACC, what's there that Alamance can benefit from?
What, in terms of...
I mean, you got a pipeline, but there's a substation, you said, in Rockingham County, is that correct?
Yes, the Anderson facility, okay.
Okay. From there to ACC on the interstate here, what benefits does Alamance County get because nobody else is... Because nobody else is, maybe they don't put a substation, maybe nobody's willing to give up 30 acres to put a substation.
For a tap, you mean? If one were to be installed?
Right. You said the substations run about, I mean, would take up about 30 or so acres, is that true?
It's that, I didn't offer that number. It all depends on the number of, I guess, the requirements of the station, the size of the station. So I can tell you the one that's proposed in Pennsylvania County is significantly larger than the one that's proposed in Rockingham County. That's just by nature of the design of the route right now. As far as on an ongoing basis, the actual length of pipe, you're asking about a direct benefit to a specific landowner? And I would refer back to the easement agreement and negotiation. So there had been talk previously about forestry tax credits, and that's another example of an issue that would come up during discussions and negotiations, because we want to make sure that landowner is treated fairly.
And one other question I had about that is, if Duke Energy is having such a problem keeping up with demand, and Piedmont or Public Service NC is having trouble keeping up with the demand of gas lines, that they are continually running feeds into various subdivisions right now. They just went into our subdivision where I own a house at, and we've been asking for it for 10 years. My question is, how can you have a lack of demand, or too much demand for the supply? And then maybe the gentleman from Public Service can answer that, but if there is so much demand, why would they spend their money to put a pipeline out before this has even happened?
Happy to differ.
Yeah, please answer that.
Mr. Bill, calling PSNC again. Appreciate your question. And we can meet the demand, or we would not be extending lines currently to new areas. We have supply in order to meet that demand. The projections that we work on, the pipeline capacity such as this that we need to acquire are five, six, eight, 10 years out. Now, I don't have a crystal ball, we don't, nobody does. 10 years is kind of a, you know, who knows? I mentioned earlier, we gained 100,000 customers over the last decade. Y'all know what happened in 2008 and 2009, it got real lean on us, okay? And it could happen again. But yet, our projections show that we will have a shortfall to meet our projected demand on that coldest day coming up with the winter of 2020, 2021, if we don't have additional supply provided by MVP Southgate. But so I can assure you, we've got capacity to meet your needs, or we wouldn't run that line, too.
Yeah, I thought you did. That's my question. And also, to comment made by Mr. Hillier from Copland. Y'all issue a stop order, I mean, you know, cut back on what you're doing because we don't have enough gas?
We have interruptible customers who have agreed to be curtailed whenever we need that, but they, they get a better rate for that, okay? There's an interrupt.
So there is a benefit.
They get a benefit.
Being on that call list.
And of course, we curtail only when necessary. Certainly, customers like the ones Mr. Hillier talked about are not happy, and we have had times, you remember what they call it, the polar vortex a few years ago? That was a 10-day, very, very cold stretch. That affects our ability to deliver gas, because Transco is our sole supplier right now, which is another reason for MVP. The General Assembly and people interested in growing North Carolina for many years have criticized the natural gas industry for only having one pipeline through the state. We didn't have competitiveness, and we didn't have supply reliability and flexibility. And certainly, the slide that was shown, if you notice, North Carolina had about the least pipeline infrastructure as anybody. So that's been true. Transco came through in 1952, and it served our needs during that time period, but it's time we can do better, and this is, as I say, our best cost alternative. We looked at all the options, including Transco inspections. This was our best cost alternative.
My question then is, where will you go, where will the Public Service Gas Company go to access this pipeline?
This pipeline will terminate at a pipeline that we have in existence now, there at the place it's going to terminate near Hall River, near Alamance Community College. We have a pipeline there now, and that pipeline serves Alamance County all into Orange, Durham, and the Triangle, okay? And it's one of our, it's a very important pipeline to us. And so choosing that to come in there and serve, and we'll also take gas off of it near Dan River, near Eden, we'll take some gas off of it there, too, and serve the northern part of our system.
So will you have to build a substation to do that, or are you just pretty much just tie into the line?
It is kind of a, a substation kind of, it's not like an electric substation where we've got a large area with a lot of wires and things. There will be some pipes coming out of the ground that will connect together, there will be metering facilities, there'll be some safety equipment and whatnot there, the automatic valves that Mr. Day spoke of, things like that. It's really not all that intrusive, it doesn't stick way up in there or anything.
Where is that terminated precisely?
Precisely, Mr. Bird, I wish I knew it precisely. It's in that area.
So I understand it was right off of 54, Highway 54?
That's my understa, you know, I thought to myself, after this is over, I'm going to go right by and find it.
So near, that's near Jacob Car Road.
I knew it was there somewhere, but I'm embarrassed to say I don't know exactly.
We were looking, when I was with the hospital, we were looking to buy property right in that area, but there was a line, a pipeline through there that was going to restrict the use of the property, so we ended up.
And that happens. Thank you.
Okay, I have some questions. Mr. Day, the nature of your company is an LLC, is that right?
Yes, Mountain Valley Pipeline LLC.
And doesn't that mean that by definition, there's some limitations on damages available? If there was some kind of negligence on part of the company, or people were hurt? As I understand it, LLCs exist to, they're, they are a way the companies can shield themselves for liability from damages. What kind of assurance do we have that your company's pockets are deep enough that they're going to cover what needs to be covered if there's an incident on this thing?
Well, I can tell you that the Mountain Valley Pipeline is committed to making sure that this project is done the right way, and is safely and responsibly maintained. EQT Midstream Partners will be the operator of that project, once it enters service. EQT Midstream is a, based in Pennsylvania, has been part of EQT Corporation, which has been around for a very long time. And EQT Corporation is the Appalachian region's leading natural gas production and transmission company. So EQT Midstream Partners would be maintaining this project during the duration of its operation. And so folks from EQT Midstream would be involved in that ongoing discussion of the project.
So if there is an, if there is a problem that came up later, they might be legally responsible for it, but if it was an inherent defect in the construction of it, then they would not be, because they didn't have anything to do with the construction of it. You're saying that your company has a commitment to safety, but I'm not seeing anything that shows a financial pocket or backing for that commitment?
I think that, you know, as far as the kind of the mechanics of actual corporate structure and how those are designed, I'm not really probably the best person to talk about corporate structure, but I'd be happy to connect you and members of the board with folks who can speak more knowledgeably than I can about that particular issue.
And you represent a private company, right?
That's correct.
And exists for the benefit of private investors, right?
A private company, yes.
Yeah, for private. So this is different, because when people traditionally think of eminent domain being used to take people's land, they think of it as being the government coming in, like the Department of Transportation is going to build a road, you know, or a utility is going to do something. But this is different from that, right? You're a private company.
Yes.
That wants to use people's private land for their private gain, under the idea that there's a public benefit to it in that you're making a product available. Is that right?
Well, so the state or federal government does not build pipelines or provide the energy. They delegate, they, private companies take on that risk and then develop the project based off of market demand and supply. And so part of that regulatory process, though, ensuring that there are protections in place for the project and for the public, the project has to go through the certificate of public convenience and necessity and demonstrate that there is a clear public need for the natural gas that would come through this project.
Right. And to go back to Mr. Boswell's point about what's the benefit to the landowners, there is no benefit to the landowners, right? They don't get a benefit for having the natural, the pipeline coming through the property.
Beyond easement negotiations? I mean, easement negotiation would be the primary benefit.
But that's not something they even want. They see that as being part of the, they're not shopping for easement. You know, people come out, hey, I got an easement over here, who wants it?
Well, some, I mean, right, some people are not interested in negotiating right now on an easement. There are other people who are willing and interested in talking about compensation and negotiating for an easement.
Okay. When I looked at the maps that were available, I saw that this pipeline goes very, very close to the Barton Marietta Plant, which does blasting. That is a quarry located off of Highway 49, and I understand that this pipeline goes within one mile of that, and they do blasting there. What, when I saw that, I thought, I can't even, you know, they're going to put a pipeline near where they do blasting.
Yeah.
So has there been any addressing of that issue? Has there been any discussion within the company of maybe changing the route so it doesn't go so close to a stone quarry?
So what I can tell you is since we're so early in that process, as I mentioned, desktop analysis basically is used to kind of inform the development of the route, and a priority is placed on co-locating along existing rights of way. But as we move through the route development process and we become more familiar with certain areas along the proposed route and geographic communities and specific parcels, all of that information is then factored into route adjustments. And as I mentioned, the Federal Energy Regulatory Commission does suggest alternatives and asks us to explore alternatives beyond what we're already looking at.
So maybe that you don't know.
Right.
Thank you. We already talked about the tax revenue prediction. I think Mr. Bird asked about that. He did say that this would be an open access line, and I was interested in learning more about that, that if we have a local manufacturer, a distribution center that wants to come into Alamance County, that this would be a resource possibly available to them to use for their energy needs.
Yes.
So can you say anything else about that?
Sure. So as an interstate line, there's the open access option. And so if there is a major employer that is looking for access to natural gas and finds a site that is along this route, they would have the opportunity to explore that, and a lot of times, what ends up happening is they work with local distribution company, or even in the absence of necessarily the major manufacturer or employer that's looking for a site, the local distribution company may end up deciding, you know what, we have significant demand, we need to find best case, best cost alternative. Best cost alternative may end up ultimately including building a tap station along the MVP Southgate project route.
Okay, I know that y'all have done a lot of, excuse me, work in the national forests to the north of us. I'm interested to know if you've gone through any other watersheds?
The route goes on the Mountain Valley Pipeline?
Yeah, to the north of us. Places that, the Mountain Valley, yeah. Have y'all gone through watersheds? Have you had to deal with these stream buffers and working through the regulatory system that exists to protect sediment erosion and pollution of drinking water for lakes?
On the Mountain Valley Pipelines? Yes, that has all been factored into that. And the Mountain Valley Pipeline has gone through an unprecedented regulatory review in Virginia, and in fact, has erosion, sediment control, and stormwater management plans that stretch across the entire length of that project in Virginia.
Can you give me an example of one of the watersheds, like we did? Around here would say the Cape Fear Watershed, or the Jordan Lake Watershed, or the Falls?
Say like the Roanoke River Watershed.
Roanoke River Watershed.
Yes.
And that is, that is an area that's gone through the permitting process? It's actually in construction, or it's finished being constructed?
Well, notwithstanding the order on Friday, I mean, construction started in that area. It's spread in that region.
Because we have peculiar, Jordan Lake is a peculiar lake. It was built intended for recreation and for stormwater control, drainage and stuff. But then, once it was built, powers to be in Durham County, Wake County, Durham, City of Durham, City of Raleigh, saw that, Cary Chapel Hill, I guess, saw the Jordan Lake and said, hey, we can clean that up and use it for drinking water. Its primary source of volume is the Hall River. The Hall River, if anybody wants to go see what the Hall River looks like when it's dirty, it's real dirty right now, because we've had a lot of rain. And there's a huge amount of sediment that flows into the Jordan Lake, and it settles to the bottom and it produces pollution, it produces nutrients that then they have to deal with trying to get out of, get out of the water. I question whether or not your company has worked in a watershed that has got the peculiar qualities of the Jordan Lake area, where the pollution doesn't come from, you know, we think of traditional pollution coming from exhaust or byproduct from industry, or from sewage systems and discharge and things like that. The pollution that goes into the Jordan Lake actually arises from the very nature of the lake itself. The Hall River, as far as I know, has always gotten really muddy when it rains a lot. And as far as I know, it probably always will. But the construction of the pipeline that you all proposed would make that situation worse. And I'm very concerned about how, how is your company going to mitigate those effects in a meaningful way?
And so the priority is establishing a route then that avoids, to the greatest extent, those impacts. And then if an impact is not able to be avoided, next step would be to minimize that impact. And so when we're talking about water body crossings, you're looking at, as I mentioned, different ways to cross it. So a horizontal directional drill goes under the river, and so you don't really have an impact necessarily at the top of the water body. That takes a much longer process, and there are other issues that have to be considered with that, because you start so far back from, from the bank, and comes out so much farther from the bank as well, so there's a potential much greater impact, right, on land surrounding that crossing. Whereas on an open cut crossing, you're looking at moving very quickly, matter of days to cross a water body, and then it's moved back into the restoration phase. So any erosion and sediment impact is designed as a very short-term impact, and it's not an ongoing matter. And so that's similar regardless of the type of pipeline it's constructed. I know the City of Burlington has run pipelines also, and has crossed Stony Creek. And so in, there are a number of pipelines that do, pipelines that currently cross the Hall River without any kind of like a longstanding issue related to erosion and sediment control. And our priority is making sure that that were to be the case for the MVP Southgate, but also that there are very intensive and rigorous measures that are applied during construction to really minimize any potential impact related to erosion and sediment control.
But then, once the pipeline is constructed, you're not allowed to have any kind of growth on the bank, right? Because what I understand, a big thing with keeping the water clean is having vegetation, thank you, vegetation, and that's not allowed with the pipeline, right?
Well, and that would be one of the factors, then, that would have to be considered and evaluated during the selection of what type of crossing would be taken. As I mentioned, on horizontal directional drill, you would start considerably farther back from the bank than you would on a big crossing.
And who, I guess, is that a decision that's made in the permitting process?
It is, yes. The Federal Energy Regulatory Commission will make the decision.
Okay. A lot of my concerns have to do with compensation. It seems like to me that you're saying today that your company is very willing to work with landowners in coming up with a reasonable compensation.
Yes.
So will you compensate for loss of use? So for example? So, for example, if you have a farmer, tobacco farmer, and y'all are going to cut through the length of his farm in April, he's not going to be able to get a crop off that field. Are you going to compensate him for the year's return that he's lost?
I believe that's part of the evaluation and discussions.
So, you discuss it, but you can't make a commitment that that would be great?
Well, I mean, it's hard for me to describe an actual specific easement negotiation about a generalized parcel because each of these easement agreements is tailored to the specific parcel and the landowner's needs. And all of that stuff is, is evaluated and part of the discussion. I mean, so it's, it's, it's just, it's difficult for me to offer hard and fast absolute, this is exactly what's going to happen in every case when every case is tailored to specific needs.
Do you know if a property owner has a legal right to receive loss of use compensation if their property is taken by a tenant and for an easement?
I do not know the answer to that question.
Do you know if a property owner is entitled to compensation if they lose a building site? If they have a plat that shows future building sites that they intend to use, and your pipeline is going to take away one of those building sites, do they have a legal right to be compensated for the loss of that site?
I do not know the answer to that question, but that is, that is a question that I will get the answer back to you.
I think that's all my questions.
No, I think we've worked him up pretty good.
We did.
All right, thank you very much. Appreciate it.
All right, so those are our two presentations. We do not have an agenda item for a discussion of what we want to do about a resolution, but I think that that's a natural part of the order of business to be expected by the obligations.
I think we need to wait to the end of that law. It's not, it's not on the schedule. Commissioners come in, come last.
Is it relevant to this, though? I think, I think they were.
We've already set rules. Let's stick to the rules that we have on the book. That's what, what, I'll take this on.
Well, well, in our agenda packet, we were presented with a proposed resolution. And I was just wanting to say that, I mean, I'd be in favor of a resolution opposing it, and I could cite off the list of reasons. Mostly, I think Ms. Bollinger hit the nail on the head when she said, it's inconsistent with four of our five pillar, strategic pillars. And, and I'm really, I mean, I'd like to stand with our, our proper youngers on this, but I think that it's not affecting me directly, but if it did, I'd be right there with them. And I just think that as elected leaders, we should do that. And I am concerned about the, the environmental impact of, of the project as it stands. And I, and I really feel like it's being driven by private investors and not by, as you mentioned, it's not a governmental agency. I haven't heard any ground swell of support from consumers that this is needed. And we have, you know, independent studies says that there's plenty of demand that's contrary to what was presented by the components of the pipeline. But, and I know that, and Clyde, you'd mentioned that there might be things that's in the proposed resolution that, you know, I don't care. It doesn't matter to me if it's exactly worded like what's in the proposed resolution, if there are things there that you don't feel like are particularly accurate or.
I'd be glad to take a, a draft, prepare a draft for your review.
Yeah, that's what I was thinking.
Some of the things that, that concern me, one of the things in the proposed resolution said hundreds of acres of mature hardwoods will be destroyed. And we've heard here today that no one really knows where half of this pipeline, proposed pipeline will go. It might go through fields, it might go through an existing easement.
They have an idea, they're worried, right? Otherwise, they wouldn't be looking to send a survey.
And then, the rules, I think, you need to follow. Based, based this on fact, no matter which, which way this board wants to go, let's just base them on some facts. That would be my suggestion. I'd be happy to draft it incorporating everything we heard today for your review and approval, if that's what you choose to do.
That's, that's what I would like to say.
I was, I'm in consensus with Bob that we need to take this, look at it next meeting, bring the resolution. And let's discuss it and make a decision where we want to go with this. In the meantime, talk to our legislators in our Congress.
I agree with that as well. I do think that in preparing a draft resolution, I would like to see language added that affirms Alamance County's commitment to economic development and to industry, to making sure that our industry has the resources available. We are open for business and want good employers to come here. To affirm that commitment, I also would like to see language in a draft that emphasizes our concerns about fairness of compensation that want to see people compensated for loss of use, loss of building sites, all different types of loss that they might experience, not just the a thousand or three thousand dollars for a little strip of an easement. I think that's concerned. And I also like to see language that addresses some of the concerns raised about the Jordan Lake Watershed and protection of the drinking water flows downstream.
Oh, that's a Burlington Watershed.
Well, that's, absolutely correct, Burlington Watershed. To reiterate our commitment to those things, I think that it would be appropriate to include maybe some kind of questioning of their estimation of 1.3 million dollars in annual tax revenue. I don't think that that's been substantiated by the company. And I would be comfortable as a body of government saying that we question whether or not that is realistic or accurate.
Maybe Watershed, those things should be included.
I think that's some good additions there. Chair?
So, to give us a place to start, to think about. So, I'll be ready at, what's our next meeting? So, we'll consider that as that next meeting. So, thank you. My name is Mr. Akins, our annual settlement and order collection. And continue with progress through our agenda. Next is Mr. Akins with our annual settlement and order collection.
Good morning, commissioners.
Good morning.
Feel like I was just here. In this to see a cup of coffee there. I'm locally unacclimated this morning, so you'll have to excuse me. This is our annual settlement. Every year, I come and give a report to this board as, as this is the board that hires me and controls me and hopefully will not fire me. The tax collector is required by the North Carolina General Statutes to give an annual settlement to the governing body. It is the intent of the Machinery Act to create a direct relationship of responsibility and accountability between the tax collector and the governing body. The governing body charges the tax collector and no one else with the personal responsibility for collecting taxes. The annual statement of the tax collector is based upon this responsibility. In accordance with the North Carolina General Statutes, I respectfully submit this report. You'll find it in your notes today, and I've got a highlight summary to present to you on current indenquity taxes. Uncollected balances are recharged. The appointed tax collector has the link in accounts, and the collector has full authority to use levy and garnishment to affect their collections. Administrator requests that the board receive the collector's annual settlement, and I'll go over the highlights for you. So, for the 2017 year, and I'm not sure which screen to, to look at anymore. I have options for a change. I'm used to looking in this direction, so is that simple to everybody?
I'll look that way.
I'll have to learn. The 2017 total levy, this is the general fund only, seventy-one million, nine hundred sixty thousand, eight hundred twenty dollars and thirteen cent. Of that, we have collected seventy-one million, one hundred seventy-three thousand, nine hundred ten dollars and ninety-eight cent. The uncollected balance being seven hundred eighty-six thousand, nine hundred nine dollars and fifteen cent. That's a collection rate of ninety-eight point nine one percent. So, now the question becomes, is that good? Is, how should we feel about that rate? We compare every year to our previous five just to see how we're doing relative to ourselves. Now, the first year that I presented to the board was 2012, and in that year, I presented a rate of ninety-seven point one percent. In 2013, that went up to ninety-seven point seven nine. In fourteen, that went up again to ninety-eight point three two. For 2015, it was up to ninety-eight point six four. For 2016, it was up to ninety-eight point eight. And this year, as we see, it's up to ninety-eight point nine one. The historical average is ninety-eight point one three. So, based on our past performance, I feel very good about the collection rate. We're trying to, to move to ninety-nine percent above. We're, we're certainly not satisfied with, with where we're at. This is not a stopping point, but happy to see that growth. But in addition to our, our past performance, I think it's valid to look at some similar counties. Now, the Department of Revenue issues certified collection rates, and those are what I use. Some counties will look at the rates that are being floated out current year, but they're all brand new, not checked, not verified. And I prefer to use last year's numbers that have been thoroughly vetted and certified and make sure that these are all solid. Now, the Department of Revenue already divides this by population, and we're in the largest population block of 100,000 and above. Within that block, I pull out the mountain and coastal counties. And with what remains, I compare based on the population and density of population, the valuation, valuation per capita, valuation per square mile, and the median household income to try to determine what's a comparable county. In order, the top five are Davison, Rowan, Cotabwa Pit, and Johnston Counties. Now, as you see, Davison is at ninety-six point seven, Rowan at ninety-eight point zero five, and Cotabwa at ninety-eight point one nine. We compare favorably to all of those. The last four, Pitt is at ninety-nine point one nine, and Johnston, if I could eliminate anyone from the list, would be Johnston, ninety-nine point eight eight. I called Sheila Gardner, who's the administrator out of Johnston, trying to understand, how do you do that? And I was sure there was some accounting shuffle happening, and I asked Pro Green questions, but she says it's all very legitimate. They have a very strong rate. I want to talk about that at, at the end. What can we do to learn from, from those counties that have those kinds of rates, from Cielo Break here to Alamance? On average, that's ninety-eight point four percent versus our ninety-eight point nine one. So, I feel good about it. I feel that we are above the average for these comparable counties. But again, it certainly shows that there's room for growth, for growth. There's more out there that we need to be taking advantage of. As far as what that relates to our, our budget and what we bring in the door, I just want to point out that in 2012, we had, what, sixty-two million? And in 2017, we're at seventy-one million. We're definitely showing progressive growth for dollars in, in just the five-year periods coming in the door have continually grown. We're happy about that. But I want to point out our previous levy years. This report is predominantly about the current levy year, but we collect ten years at once, the current year plus the previous nine before write-off. And back in 2014, we see there was a peak at 1.8 million outstanding. And we decided then that we wanted to work on that number, that we didn't like having prior year balances growing. And so, we started working on that. As you can see, this come down, 1.6, 1.5, now 1.48. So, it's, it's kind of a, a tough slog, but we're, we're pushing through trying to bring those back years down as well. So, it's not just progress on the front rate that we're talking about, but on the previous nine as well. Looking forward to the next year. We're getting close enough to ninety-nine percent that I've got a habit. It's, it's on my mind. And we have to ask, well, what can we do to improve from here? Well, one of the first things is I want to go out and visit some of our neighbors. I've been talking to Johnston County, with Durham County, with Wake County, trying to figure out some of the folks that have very high rates. What are they doing differently? Can we learn from them? Actually taking some of our team and, and sitting in, seeing a day in the life and trying to, to get some information back that we can utilize. We also want to look at our efficiencies. We've changed our model significantly over the past few years from an individual basis to mass basis using our software. That's been beneficial to us. But now, we need to relook at our efficiencies, making sure we're being as, that where we place our emphasis is what's giving us the return. Now, we're also looking at some data scrubs. There are companies out there who provide everything from addressing data to social security data that right now, we're hand-in-trim, hand-low-feeding. We may be able to scrub our data. If we get more bills in hands, that's a plus. If we have new enforcement, so we've got more identifiable information, that's a plus too. The last thing that we're looking at for the coming year is to add some autograph options. Now, I'm working with Susan right now, just in exploratory fashion to see what our options are. But the vision's twofold, and one is customer service. So, you may have noticed that we send out payment coupons now to break the bill into five payments. We've gotten tons of positive reviews from that. We changed it a little bit this year. Businesses don't get those because we had, we're the large businesses paying piece by piece. I was like, I don't need that.
I just get it all at one time.
Right. So, we don't send to businesses, and if they're very tiny amounts, if there's a few dollars per coupon, we don't board with it. We set up $25 total bill amendment, which is a $5 per coupon minimum. But we got a great response, and we've had people say, well, can I sign it for 12 months out of the year? I just want to pay every month, just make it part of my monthly budget. Well, we're interested to do that, and we're exploring being able to set up a bank draft so that once the taxpayer knows what the bill is, basically for six months, you're prepaying. And the next six months, you're paying by the end of December to stay out of the bill in the period. And if we can do that, then a person could just set up, it pays itself every month, 12 months. That's the convenience side. Now, the other side of this is, in the counties we've talked to, they've really stressed payment plans, but they get a lot of success off of payment plans. And we use those, but not to their fullest extent. And the reason that we're, we're hesitant is that it's labor-intensive. If you make an agreement with someone, but you don't check to see if they're doing it, then it's really no good because they pay you one time, they stop paying you, you don't know. So, you have to check in on them and then check in again and check in again to follow up. We're not looking to add any more staff if we can avoid it, so how do we get out of that? If we have an autograph option, what I'd like to see, just to share my vision with you, is that a citizen who wants a payment plan, they might even be anxious about talking to the collector. They wouldn't have to do that. They just go to a website. We've already got a program then with what parameters we find acceptable for a payment plan. And they can put in their information, sign up and say, oh, look, this is what I want to do, set it up for autograph. And then, every month, it drafts out her plan. And we haven't touched it. It's just drafting out. Our system shows that they're in payment plan. If we ever miss a payment, guess what we know? They've gone in and taken the autograph out. It's not, I forgot to write a check. No, you've intentionally gone in and taken it out. The first month, that payment doesn't come through. We know it's in default. And again, we can automate. So, we're hoping to offer better payment options to the citizens without bringing that additional staff time to keep our efficiencies. That's the outlook for the future. Additionally, while on the fore you, there's two other items that we need to take care of. One is the charge off of the 2018 property, sorry, the 2008 property taxes. The statutes empower us for a ten-year period to go out and enforce if there's an unpaid amount. But as of September first, the two thousand eight will be out of that ten-year period, and will be unenforceable to us. We could take a voluntary payment, we could call, we'd say, please want you to pay, but that's really all we have at that point. Traditionally, then, we've written off at the ten-year mark. As of the close of this past fiscal year, on June thirtieth, we had a hundred and forty-six thousand, twenty-eight dollars and sixty-nine cents. That was outstanding from the two thousand eight tax year, and that would be an amount to be written off, seeking the board's approval to do that.
Second.
All right, we have a motion in a second. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed?
And then the final item is the annual charge to the tax collector. I've got the charge in the paperwork. Basically, it says that I am empowered to go forward and collect the taxes arising in 2018. I'd like to put that before the board and ask that the board issue the charge to go out and collect anything.
Does that mean we have to keep you for...
While I'm hoping you will.
Second.
We have a motion in second. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you, Erin.
All right, next we have an appointment to the Alamance County College Board of Trustees. Decision to make.
I'll make the motion, and we'll appoint Craig Thompson.
We have a motion.
I'll second that, Bill.
A second to appoint Craig Thompson. Is there any discussion about it?
Well, we have some good, really good candidates.
Yeah, we do. We had a former commissioner on that list.
Yeah, that's right.
Who?
Roger Parker.
Yeah, Roger Parker, right. And I like the woman too, because of what she's done with the career accelerator program.
Candidate's older.
Five.
All right, we have a motion in second to appoint Craig Thompson to the ACC Board of Trustees. Is there any more discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Now, we have a update on the Woody Drive property.
Good morning, Chair Gayle and Commissioners. I'm here to talk to you about the property the county owns, located on Woody Drive in Graham. County owns a piece of property of almost seven acres, six point eight-one acres, located at seven seventy-nine Woody Drive in the city of Graham. This is the site of the former Peak Resources facility. We had this property appraised in June of 2017. Appraisal value of the property was six hundred and forty-seven thousand dollars. At the time, the appraisal was five hundred and thirty-seven thousand dollars, and that was with the building. The building has been removed from the property, so at this time, there's no structure on the property. The property is actually made up of two tax parcels. The smallest parcel over there includes a billboard that's visible from Interstate eighty-five forty. The county receives revenue for owning that property, having the billboard on the property, and from the payment from the company for allowing it to be on county property. Just to give you some insight into this land, the property has industrial and commercial value. Obviously, it has great interstate access and visibility. The city of Graham's indicated that the property also has access to a twelve-inch water and sewer service, which is very good for industrial and business development. There's also a hundred thousand square foot existing permeable surface permitting on the property already, because it had a building on it. This is important if you... Anyone goes to build another structure on the property. Now, of course, the location, central in Alamance County, both north and south, and east and west. So, this property the county's owned for a number of years. It's now been reduced to pretty much a vacant site. We've recently received an offer to purchase. The offer's from Mr. John Burton. He's here with us today, along with his business and family. Family. And Mr. Burton has offered the county five hundred and thirty-seven thousand dollars for this property. We have several options as the county of what to do with the property. It could be offered for sale to the highest bidder. I would suggest, if the Commissioners were interested in doing that, that we would consider using any cash that we gained, put toward our capital plan, put toward our capital needs. So, you could sell the property to the highest bidder. You could exchange the property for another site that might be more useful for county operations. You know we're in the process of completing our facility plan. I foresee that that plan will be completed by the end of this calendar year. So, at this time, I wouldn't be able to tell you another property that I know it would be reasonable to consider trading this property for, but this is a valuable piece of property. That is an option the county has. The county can also offer the property for a short-term lease. So, if Commissioners wanted to consider offering this property to someone to lease for three to five years, that is a possibility. I would suggest that we would want to title the lease to limit the capital improvement that can be done on the property, till we figure out for sure what we want to do with it. And then, we also have the option of doing a lease purchase, where we require a buyer to give us assurances of what kind of development they will do on the property. We could set a tax... A taxable amount of investment we would like to see go on this property. I will tell you that I've had several meetings with the city of Graham. Graham's very interested in the decision that we make with this property. As far as their tax base, they see a lot of potential for development. So, they've communicated to me that they would hope that we would give thought to, if we're going to sell it, sell it the way that it will be developed and bring in tax revenue for the county and for the city. Our facility plan is still in process. We, as I say, I suspect that it will be completed by the end of this year. So, I don't have anything that I can tell you right now that I know of that county government would use this property for. I feel like it's probably not likely that we will use it, but I can't rule it out. We have had some discussions about the possibility of using it for emergency services purposes, understanding this is a very valuable piece of property. It's valuable to us to have good interstate access for our emergency services too, but this is just a very valuable piece of property. So, while I'm inclined to tell you, I don't foresee county use of this. I can't tell you that with surety until our plan is completed. So, you don't have to take any action at all today. I've tried to tell you some of the options that we have. I know we have the Burtons here, and if they'd like an opportunity to speak to you, if you care to do that, Madam Chair, that'd be great too. I appreciate them coming. They've also been very patient. I know we've been working on the facility plan for some time, and appreciate the gentlemen's patience also, so.
Do y'all have anything else there?
Yeah. Well, we acquired our property about a year ago, where the SCI building is. And we're in the process of leasing our building at this present time. We've had a lot of companies that want to lease our building, and we're talking to one now that will probably lease it, but we need more land if we do lease it to them. It's a pretty big company. So, really, we need the land, one, because it's adjacent to us, and two, you know, to expand our company and manufacturing, or parking, whatever we got, you know, wherever the needs are. So, that's really the reason we want to buy the land, you know? It makes sense to buy since it's right next to us. We're going to pay the five thirty-seven, we know it's worth appraisal six forty-seven, but we don't agree that... Then it's worth six forty-seven. Now, if you want to put it out for bid, that's fine, but I don't know if we want to... I don't know if we want to put it out at five thirty-seven starting at the bid, because we're trying to get it cheap as we can as well, you know what I'm saying?
Doris, I think we would have to... If we decided to sell the property, Mr. Albright, we would have to go through the bid process, is that correct?
There are five different ways under the statute. You can have a private negotiation and sale. You can set up an exchange, as you mentioned before. They call it the ten thirty-one exchange, where we get a third party that holds the money and buys property that we want. It's a three-way swap, that's done sometimes. You can have a negotiated offer. You can advertise for sealed bids, or you can take the gentleman's five hundred and thirty-seven thousand dollars.
That's good to know. So... I was going to bring a check. I can still bring it.
But those are the options that are available to you. And I want to point out that in the initial discussions, the sign of the billboard was carved out of the parcel. I'm not sure if you were wanting to include that sign in your purchase, but now would be a good time to...
You're talking about the billboard?
The billboard, yeah. You know, we... Is that part of your offer, to have that billboard included, or have you thought of that?
We could move it on up to six thirty-seven if you go throw the billboard in there.
Oh, okay. Billboard generates right at nine thousand dollars a year in revenue to the county.
Yeah, we could do that, but...
I think it would be a mistake to sell that billboard area.
You're right. Well...
You don't want that.
No, we don't want that. We'll take it. But if you want to keep it, that's fine.
Was the six thirty-seven appraisal inclusive of the billboard?
The six hundred and forty-seven thousand dollars, I believe, was inclusive of the entire property, so...
And you're thinking that six forty-seven is over-appraised?
That's our opinion. Well, it's just, that's our opinion. I mean, you know, but...
The only thing that they're saying is, it's the only worth what somebody's willing to pay for it.
Bottom line, right?
Yeah.
Mr. Burton, we did not do an analysis of the billboard. We didn't do a present use.
Right.
Because billboards are hard to come by, and I think the signed company will continue to lease it to the county as long as the county wishes to lease it to them. That's why we carved it out, and we have a separate income generating. It doesn't cost us anything. We don't have to maintain it. We don't have to do anything except cash the check.
Was appraisal on the board, on the billboard?
Brian said it was, just then, but...
Let me double-check. I've got the appraisal here.
That makes my offer better, for you.
So, the appraisal was for six point eight-one-zero acres, which is, if I'm not mistaken, that's... Is that the end?
That's the entire lot.
That's inclusive of the billboard in the right of way, yeah.
The billboard's closer to eighty-five, and the lot that we're... Well, from the sale is not that close.
No, it's where the rest home was.
I think there's two different lots.
It's where the beach was. You just got to cross it.
It is. It's separated currently into two different lots, but...
That's what I thought.
Looking at the appraisal, it appears the entire six point eight-one acres was appraised at a total dollar figure of six hundred and forty-seven thousand. That would include both lots, but it's...
So, to the county at the current rate of the billboard, in ten years, the county should recoup that variance that you guys offered.
The billboard is worth a hundred thousand or more. You know what I'm saying? So, we're really in line with the appraisal.
Yeah, that's what I was thinking.
You know, and so, if you calculate that way...
Would a lease be an option? I mean, I don't know. You're talking about maybe parking this, that, and the other.
I don't think so. I think we just like to put it as one piece. We've got twenty-two acres now, that would give us like twenty-nine. And we do have a lot of potential industries looking at it, but we just need that six more acres, because we have to lease the property, we're going to have to expand our building, or...
Got to provide parking.
Yeah, got to provide parking plus.
So, your interest is to ultimately sell or lease the property for a tax-paying entity, like a manufacturing company?
Yeah.
But you're not a manufacturer, you're selling.
Well, we got like a hundred and thirty-two thousand square feet available, and we're going to lease that out, but when we do lease it out, they're going to require additional parking, which we're using the parking lot now for our...
Yeah, so whether it's manufacturing on the parcel that we would sell to you, or it's going to be manufacturing in the old SCI building, but to make that happen, you need the parking, either way, we're going to be increasing the tax base.
Oh, yes, certainly.
And again, as I say, I don't want to gloss over our conversations with the city of Graham, but we have taught with them about the possibility of putting this out like a brokered deal, where we solicit responses from folks about, are they interested in buying the property and putting additional investment on it? That's a process that takes time. We don't have an offer in hand right now, other than Mr. Burton's offer.
Plus commission.
Yeah. So, I do want to stress, the city is very interested in what happens to this property. They would see tax benefit, as we would, if it were bought today and developed into...
Yeah, we're not paying them taxes.
Yes. So, their interest goes beyond just the property, and ours too, from a tax standpoint. We have an interest beyond the property, just reentering the tax rolls. It's also, can it re-enter the tax rolls with development on it? That would be ideal, from the city and the county's perspective.
I think it's very important that we don't make a final decision about this until we get the facilities plan back. I remember Ms. Peterson came in wanting to buy the Cronot Clinic building, and we told her that we needed to evaluate and figure out what the best use of the property was before we could commit to somebody purchasing that, and I would hate to see us treated differently, purchased differently.
What's the timeline for that, do you think?
By the end of this year, we should have a determination about this property and most of our other properties too, so...
So, for... Foremost?
Yes.
Yes.
Is that true?
I mean, it is what it is, but I mean, you know, we've been waiting a year for this evaluation that's being done, you know what I'm saying? And I don't... I mean, I don't know. It's just, to me, it's a common sense decision. I mean, I don't think you need ninety thousand dollars an acre for county offices, you know what I'm saying? I think you can...
It's the best use of the property is what we need today.
I mean, you know, you're going to give up forty thousand dollars worth of value per acre if you build anything over there, because you're not going to get that tax on that forty thousand acre. So, I mean, it's critical to us, because we've got companies waiting to come in, and I can't... It's hard for me to give them an answer.
And they're going to invest here.
Oh, they're going to...
And come.
It's a big company.
Add to our taxes.
They would do power, so it's going to be a big company.
I'm going to make a motion that we allow Clyde to work out an agreement with the corporation.
Could we get some feedback from the city of Graham?
Certainly.
It'd be nice to make sure that there are, you know, collaborative governmental entities, that we have common interests here, and that's not going to take you four months.
I would think they would do it pretty quickly.
Are you talking about maybe them being a part of this discussion, that Mr. Lashley's talking about having Clyde prepare something? Would you like... You want us to see if the city wants to be a part of that discussion? Or do you want the city to come here?
I don't think the city is involved in this. In my opinion, it's between those buyers and the county.
Sure.
I don't think that we don't even buy, in my opinion. We don't need to consider the city or Graham. They don't consider us.
You did the appraisal, so that's...
Yeah.
You know, you paid for the appraisal, and we're in line with that.
Yeah.
Do you want to conduct this as a negotiated sale with an upset bid period, like we did when we sold Woody to...
Sure, absolutely.
All right. I can put that together. And bring that to our next meeting. And in the facility plan, I think we can look at one parcel and say, yeah, we need it, or don't need it.
Yeah, absolutely.
It's pretty simple, you do need it or don't need it. And...
Well, I would still like to have a discussion with the city.
That's fine, they can be here at that next meeting.
Well, that'd be fine too. But this does lie within the municipality, and I think there's something we said to be collaborating on any economic development.
Unless they're going to buy it, I don't think we need to consider it.
I'm not suggesting that we don't, we can't...
Our decision will be autonomous to us.
It'll still be our decision, but it would be really nice to put forth that... What am I trying to say?
What's the period for upset bid? Thirty days. So, we actually push it into September.
What does that mean, though? I mean...
So, if we were to come back on August twentieth with a... We've talked with the city, revisited this with them. Mr. Albright's put together the process to do a bid. We would come to you on August twentieth. If you say go forward, the bid would be released after the August twentieth meeting.
And they have thirty days to respond to that, so by September, end of September...[1683.54] And they have 30 days to respond to that, so by September, end of September, you would have...
Did they see my bid? I mean, how's it work?
Yeah, they will see it. I mean, it's kind of government's open to that. I mean, you're going to be on TV with that bid, so.
Well, yeah, but I don't want to pay 537, I can get it for 437.
Well, there you go.
Well, and I think the Commissioners...
I like TV, but I ain't going to pay...
The Commissioners could reject the bids too, isn't that correct? Mr. Albright, if they can't...
We do have an option.
$1,000, you could, you could say no.
That's the, we, in our last notice, we put in the notice that within 10 days after it's published, the person may raise the offer by not less than 10% of the first 1,005% of the remainder. So you can put, you can put the language in.
So what are you saying, Clyde? He's offering 537.
537.
Right.
But, but do I offer that in a closed bid?
Well, it's not a closed bid, it's become an open bid.
Open bid, I mean, well, I mean, do I offer, offer it on an open bid? I mean, why would I offer 537? I'd probably get for 450 if I, if I did it right, you know what I'm saying?
Jack can bid on the 450.
Well, maybe not, but I would... I think the Commissioners would want to have the prerogative to not sell. If the high bid was $400,000 at the end of the process and you felt like that was not appraised value and you didn't want to, you don't have to sell.
Didn't that what happened with Ms. Peterson, the Cronot Clinic? Didn't she, we have an open bid process and we didn't get any more bids? It was only the 10,000. And then we decided to wait and see what the facilities plan came back with and then ultimately she withdrew her bid.
Yes.
I guess I'm not as concerned with the facilities plan only because that, that piece of property is really valuable. It's more valuable than what we would use...
Commercial usage is where it needs to be.
Industrial or...
Well, like I say, today, we're willing to pay top price, you know what I'm saying? And I guess it makes your decision to decide whether the county needs or not. If county doesn't need, it's, it's no right there.
So can I ask a question? My understanding had been that you wanted to use the property for essentially storage of your inventory, to keep your trailers on it?
Or, or build additional building.
Or build an additional building. But we don't have any assurance that you're going to build an additional building?
No, you don't have that.
Or what it's going to be worth or anything like that? As opposed to if we waited for another buyer who had a plan to build a hotel on it or a Cracker Barrel or something like that?
Well, yeah, I mean, certainly you're going to get more taxes on, you know, a hotel to a $3 million, 4 million, whatever it is, but that's a chance you got to take one way or the other.
I understand, that's why I'm asking the question, to know what chances is.
Yeah. The ideal situation is get a hotel to build there, build a $5 million hotel, that would be an ideal.
Yeah.
You know.
Or a $20 million manufacturing plant.
Right.
Six acres.
Well, now, this company's coming in, does employ around 200 people. They're not directly employed, but they're, it's, it will involve a lot more employees in this area, but I don't know, it's just a decision you got to make. I mean, if it's for sale, you get the appraised value. I say sell it, that's my thing.
John, you're talking to government. Things don't run like they do in the business.
Well, I think we all have said there's a little bit of a fiduciary responsibility to go through a process and...
Mr. Lashley, would you please state your motion?
Sure, if somebody's going to second, I might as well.
I'll second, I think.
Just go ahead and restate it so I know...
I'll make the motion.
It's been a while.
I'm going to stick with the motion.
What was, what was...
To sell the property and get Clyde to work out a deal with those, with those people.
So what you're saying, we have a ready, willing buyer today.
Absolutely.
All right. I just want to be clear, it's through a negotiated offer, advertisement, and upset bid process.
Okay, sure.
We've done that before.
And I'll second that.
Okay.
For the, for the upset bid process, so we're not, the motion is, the motion we're voting on is not to go ahead and sell this piece of property to these gentlemen.
Right, it's to prepare...
It's to go through a bid process.
Right, to prepare the, the offer, advertisement, and publish it. And if there are any, anybody else wants to come in and overbid in accordance with the statutes...
Raise it 10%, right?
It's 10% of the first $1,000 and 5% of the remainder.
Okay.
That's the minimum upset bid.
And to make sure, this is the way we dealt with Cronot Clinic building, Ms. Peterson?
Yep.
And this is also the way we dealt with the Turntime property and the Alliance people.
That's correct. And when we sold the property to Peak Industries on Main Street, same process.
I think the process is what we need to do.
Yeah.
So if there is no upset bid, well...
Yeah, shorts for 537, you'll be the proud owner of it.
Well, you'll, you'll always, again, you would have to...
Well, that's not, excuse me, I'm sorry, Ms. Hager, but that's not necessarily true that he would get it from the, if there's no upset bid, we would still have the responsibility to approve it as a board.
And you can reject it or you can ask for more?
You can still reject it if we want to.
Right. It's up to the board to make that final decision.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right, so we have a motion in a second. Is there any more discussion? All in favor, please say aye. Anyone opposed?
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. What about the strategic plan?
Good morning, Commissioners. I'm here to request final approval of the Alamance County Strategic Plan. A draft was presented at our last meeting and it has been amended to include recommendations from the discussion at that meeting. We've not received any other recommendations from the public or our staff and would like to request final approval of the document in front of you.
I read it over and I thought it looked really good, so I make a motion to approve it.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion in a second. Do we have any more discussion?